All right, everyone. It is 2:01 PM on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We welcome you. And now I would like to invite Clerk Rodriguez for roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Woodley. Trustee Westlake.
Here.
President Smith.
Here.
I'm here. Vice President Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
And our two representatives will be a little delayed. Madam President, we've got corn.
Thank you. So, safety and service are something that we talk about quite a bit from this board. And we have the upcoming retirement of someone whose career epitomizes that. He is a 28 and 1/2 year career veteran of the police force. He started in 1995 with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, served in multiple roles there, and eventually joined the Washoe County School District in 2005 as the Campus Officer for Reed High School. Since then, Chief Jason Trevino has held multiple roles culminating into his most recent role, which is the top of our Washoe County School Police as our Chief of Police. He retires with honor and our thanks on January 12th. Chief Trevino, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united by the individual or the community, for all.
And we look forward to recognizing Chief Trevino and our other officers later in today's meeting. So that closes item 1.03 and we'll move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave distant homes in the hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu/Washoe, Nukmu/Northern Paiute, Niwe/Western Shoshone, and Nuwu/Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous people, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. So that closes Section 1 and brings us to Section 2, which is a unique section to this first Tuesday meeting of each January. And that is the annual reorganization of the Board of Trustees. And so we will go ahead and we will open the first item, which are board nominations and the election of the President of the Board of Trustees for the 2024 year from among the following: Jeff Church, Adam Mayberry, Diane Nicolet, Joe Rodriguez, Beth Smith, Colleen Westlake, and Alex Woodley. This is an item for possible action. Now, this item works a little bit differently than many of our other items we're used to asking questions and clarifying things, but in this case, we're going to actually follow a nomination process. And so this first process will be the nomination of people for these roles, seeing if those people are going to accept that nomination. And then there will be, of course, an opportunity for public comment because this is an item for action. Following that public comment, there could be deliberation or there could be a motion to move forward. So, we were all on the board last January, so we have a bit of familiarity with that. So at this point, I will call for nominations, and I see Trustee Westlake's light on.
We're just doing the President right now, right? So I would like to nominate Beth Smith for President of the School Board for this next year. Thank you.
I am very honored by that. Serving this board and our team and this community has been an exceptional honor this past year. And if voted again as your president, I would absolutely continue with the honor and service that you've seen this past year. So I accept that nomination. Seeing no other lights, do we have any public comment on this item, JJ?
Gordon Gossage.
Hi, Mr. Gossage. Good to see you.
For the record, I'm Gordon Gossage. It's a hard one. And with regenerisus Reno. And I would like to urge the President to make 2024 a year where we coordinate with some of our other elected bodies, city councils, the two city councils, Washoe County, and also the Library Board. And if I may, I just had my statement that I've just decided to apply for the Library Board position. In Washoe County, our library is our community. And whether you're a member of the MAGA movement or a progressive like me, or somewhere in between, I want to listen to you. And I think all our boards will need to listen. Sometimes it's excruciating to listen, but we must. And we all know what the top issues are. How we teach gender fluidity to our children and our fellow adults. We need creative adults, excuse me, creative ideas that are more nuanced than a lot of what we have at present. I will listen to all opinions, even if you deliver them very emotionally to me face-to-face. However, let's explore the meaning of a civil conversation within a community setting. And again, let's do that across all our elected and appointed boards. And I honestly hope everyone who hears this, stop what some of you do in public meetings. The intensity of this behavior is a new phenomenon across our country. And no, both sides don't engage in what I'm defining as inappropriate behavior when members of our communities share the public meetings many of our friends and relatives were willing to die to protect. In addition to the controversies, I'd also like to learn more about the issues that people put in the top 10. And in some cases, these could be something like solving a library desert in the Sun Valley, and of course, working with the school boards in each, I mean, the schools in each of our communities. And please don't assume that your interests are only shared with a few of your neighbors. Let's work together with librarians, educators, and donors to evaluate what might be possible to add to both our schools and our libraries. And I've begun learning about best practices for libraries nationally and around the planet. And I just ask me people, whether it's a school or a library, what are the best practices that you've seen nationally or in another country? Have you lived or visited another place with a library that included a feature you loved? So just remember, our library is our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gossage.
That's all I have for this item.
I appreciate that. I'll speak from my heart. From the moment you gave me this opportunity to serve you, I have poured my entire heart into being the President of this board. I follow a wonderful line of leaders before me, and that's a charge that I've taken very, very seriously. I have been proud of the work that I've done, the challenges we faced, and the path ahead of us. And I give you my word, I will serve with the same honor and intensity as I did in my first year. So thank you so much for that nomination. And seeing no other lights on, I will very happily entertain a motion.
Make a comment?
Of course.
I'm going to be voting no. I recognize that President Smith has served for the last term. I do think there's others that maybe deserve the chance. I know that they didn't want it, but Trustee Mayberry, Trustee Nicolet, both have the demeanor, I think, for the job. I'm not going to, not going to go into great detail, but alleged news reports report that I was called a liar by the Board of, Board spokesperson, who happens to be President Smith. I don't think that's appropriate. So based on all those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Well, someone has to actually, that was the nomination. Yes.
I'm ready. I move to nominate Beth Smith as the President of the Washoe County School Trustee Board.
All right. Motion by Trustee Woodley, seconded by Vice President Nicolet. Thank you so much for that. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you so much. I'm very, very, very grateful to you. All right. That closes item 2.01. And it does mean I stay in this chair. Just so everyone knows, we'll continue through these items, and then if there's movement, we will also do a reorganization of the seating, which is very common, and we'll do that after we take photos. And that's a very normal thing that we do each year for this process. So for opening item 2.02, these are the board nominations and election of Vice President of the Board of Trustees for 2024 from among the following: Jeff Church, Adam Mayberry, Diane Nicolet, Joe Rodriguez, Beth Smith, well, not me anymore, so Joe Rodriguez, Colleen Westlake, and Alex Woodley. This is an item for possible action, and we'll open in the same way we did with the first item, which is to see if there are any nominations of our colleagues for service.
Yes. I, Diane Nicolet, nominate trustee Adam Mayberry for Vice President of our Board for 2024.
I'll second.
And so when we get to the motion, we can definitely do that, but I will give you dibs on that. I'll make sure you, I'll make sure you have, you have dibs on that. So before we move on to see if there's any other nominations, trustee Adam Mayberry, do you accept that nomination for Vice President?
Does the job pay more?
All the jelly beans you can eat.
No, I, I'm honored. I'm grateful for the, for the nomination. I'll be proud to serve alongside you, President Smith, and support this, this board. Thank you very much. Alex.
All right. So trustee Mayberry accepts that nomination for the role of Vice President. And I see no other lights on for other nominations. I do want to welcome our student representative, Araba Deason, who snuck right in. So, welcome to the meeting. All right. Seeing no lights, JJ, do we have any public, public comment on item 2.02?
Valerie Fianaca.
Hi, Ms. Fianaca. Welcome.
I hope your new boardroom has got more parking than this one because there's no parking here. I would just respectfully request that any of y'all that take board positions and Vice President, Chair, whatever, serve out your terms. Don't require, don't quit before your term is up, and make it a fair election the next go-around. Give people a chance to run against you and not make it an appointment for the next people coming up for those seats. It's the right thing to do. And good luck in your election.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
That's all I have for this item.
All right. So I'll bring it back here. And now I would be looking for a motion on the, oh, we got a lot, look at the action here. All right. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. I would like to move that trustee Adam Mayberry be voted for Vice Presidency for this coming year.
I second.
So motion by trustee Westlake, seconded by trustee Church. Seeing no lights. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Vice President. All right. All right. So that brings us now, closes item 2.02 and brings us to item 2.03. These are the board nominations and election of Clerk of the Board of Trustees for 2024 from among the following: Jeff Church, Diane Nicolet, Joe Rodriguez, Colleen Westlake, and Alex Woodley. This is also an item for possible action. And at this point, I will invite nominations for the role of Clerk. Trustee Woodley.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Joe Rodriguez for the role of Clerk.
Clerk Rodriguez, do you accept the nomination for Clerk?
Yes, Madam President, I do, and thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Seeing no other lights on, JJ, do we have any public item for item 2.03?
I have none.
All right. So I will bring it back to this board and look for a motion.
Thank you, President Smith. I move that we elect trustee Rodriguez in the role for Clerk for the following year.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by trustee Westlake, seconded by Vice President Adam Mayberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Clerk Rodriguez, and congratulations to everyone. Thank you. So we're going to take a brief pause while we do some reseating and take a photo, and then we will be right back with everyone, but you'll be watching this entire process so you'll know where we're at. All right, everybody. Are we good? All right. It's 2:28 PM, and I'm going to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We just closed Section 2, our annual reorganization of the board, and I am incredibly honored to join to my right our new Vice President, Adam Mayberry. And then also continuing in his service as Clerk, Clerk Joe Rodriguez. Thank you all so much. Now we'll go ahead and we'll open item, Section 3, our consent agenda items. I have not been alerted in advance of any items to pull, so I'm looking for any lights now to see if there's any items. Seeing no items, that means that we will be considering as a whole items 3.02 to 3.15. And seeing no lights on for initial questions, JJ, do we have any public comment for any items 3.02 to 3.15?
I have no cards.
Very good. So I'll bring it back to this board. I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items 3.02 to 3.15.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 302 through 315. Second.
All right. Motion by Clerk Rodriguez, seconded by trustee Woodley. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, or all those opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we'll go ahead and close that Section 3 and move on to Section 4. These are our finance items for the day. And this is the official notice that we will be opening item 4.01. This is a public hearing, discussion, and possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-001, a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $2.3 million of medium-term obligations for the purpose of acquiring school buses and other support vehicles for the district, and direction to the Chief Financial Officer to forward materials to the Department of Taxation of the State of Nevada. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers. And now, like I had said, but I do have to formally note that this now officially opens the public hearing on Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-001.
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. Dr. McNeil, this is our annual pro- This is our annual process to issue medium-term bonds for the purchase of vehicles. This essentially kicks off the process. This resolution would authorize myself to submit an application package to the State Department of Taxation, I was going to say Transportation, but it's Taxation, for approval to issue medium-term notes, which the state law defines as less than a 10-year maturity to again procure, in this case, for this year, just buses, no white fleet. So as noted in the staff report, the issuance size is not to exceed 2.3 million, which allows to replace 11 buses at a cost of approximately $210,000 per bus. Once we submit that package to taxation, hopefully we'll get approval. And then I'd come back to you for an actual bond resolution to issue that debt. We go through a separate process for medium-term bonds. We don't sell it in the open market through an official statement, but instead privately place it through a competitive process. But we'll do a private placement through banks that'll come later on in the fiscal year. So there is a different process for medium-term bonds. As noted again in the staff report, these essentially replace four-year bonds that were issued four years ago that are rolling off. So we're simply just replacing one bond issuance for another, thereby not significantly increasing our total outstanding debt. These bonds are, the debt service on these bonds would be paid by our Government Services Tax Fund, so they're not coming out of our general fund. And so we've sized the bonds and we'll go to market with the bonds with a maturity that will allow us to pay for that debt service based on existing general or governmental services tax revenues. So that basically completes my presentation, unless there are questions which I'm happy to answer.
All right. Are there any questions before we go to public comment? Trustee Westlake, followed by Trustee Church.
Thank you, President Smith. And this is just from my own knowledge. How, what is the lifespan of a school bus?
Roughly 15 years.
15 years? Yeah, about the same as a car.
Yep.
I might have missed it in the staff report. I know we're experimenting with electric buses. I'm assuming there's no electric buses in this one?
No, these would all be the traditional diesel buses. The electric buses are significantly more expensive, roughly half a million dollars, and we've been procuring those through grants only.
And it's kind of an experiment to see how they work.
It is a pilot program, and we're evaluating, assessing, you know, how those are working in various seasons and various geographies. Yeah, that's right. So until there's kind of a firm view on that, we'll continue to buy the traditional diesel buses.
And you said this was coming out of like a general services, is that not capital projects?
Sorry. If I said general services tax, I meant to say governmental services tax.
You probably did.
And that is a capital fund, but this is equipment, and that's an allowable use out of that fund.
Yeah, I read the NRS on that for vehicles. Did it get approved by the Capital Project Committee?
Yes, it is, and it's in our capital improvement program.
Great, thank you.
All right, seeing no other lights. JJ, do we have any public comment for this Item 4.01?
I have none.
All right. So that now closes the public hearing on the Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-001. Seeing no other lights on for further discussion, I will entertain a motion. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-001. A resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $2,300,000 of medium-term obligations to finance the purchase of buses and district support vehicles, and directs the Chief Financial Officer to forward materials to the Department of Taxation of the State of Nevada.
All right. Motion by Trustee Westlake, and that was a good, big, long motion, seconded by Clerk Rodriguez. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All right. Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you so much. And that closes Section 4 of today. We have a lot of sections today. And that closes Item 4.01 and Section 4 in its entirety. And now we get on to the rest of today's meeting for items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And that's Section 5. And we will start first with the adoption of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-002. This is a resolution proclaiming January 9th, 2024, Law Enforcement Recognition Day in the Washoe County School District. And this is an item for possible action. And we do have a resolution that we'll be reading at some point, but we have a couple very special people. I was able to welcome Chief Trevino earlier when he let us in the pledge. And we will also be joined by our Deputy Chief, Ray Price. He retired on January 5th, so he's already retired. He's already, hopefully, enjoying those times watching The Price is Right in the morning. And he deserves that after serving 25 years in law enforcement. So Ray began his service in 1998 as a deputy with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, where he served in the detention unit, the detention response team, and the training unit. And he began his service with the Washoe County School Police Department in 2023 as the patrol officer at Robert McQueen High School. And he also served as a campus officer at Sparks High School, HUG High School, and a patrol officer at HUG and Reed as well, and for middle school students before becoming a sergeant in 2011. And then in 2016, he was selected to be the Deputy Chief of the School Police under Chief Jason Trevino. And they're going to be leading us in a presentation about our fantastic school police, of which we are honored for every single day, and that put their lives on the line so that we can protect our children and our staff. And so we welcome you up, and we look forward to this item. And there will be much celebrating to be had after the reading of the resolution and some photos as well, too.
Okay, well, thank you very much. As you know, we're generally flying under the radar as much as possible, so out of our comfort zone today. But first and foremost, I would like to thank retired Deputy Chief Price for his years of service and obviously for being at my side my entire time as the chief. It's been a pleasure to work with him and an honor, and very proud of the work that he's done for this department, for this community. I am going to call up, I know we're one chair short, but he can either pull up a chair or stand at the podium, our interim Chief of Police, Bo Lorenson. All right, so yes, Sergeant Lorenson is going to be acting as our interim chief when I leave on Friday, so he and I are working together this week to kind of take the training wheels off and let him run free a little bit until the new chief of police is selected. Bo actually has more seniority on the department than I do. He came over shortly before I did, so he's very well experienced, worked in a lot of facets as a sergeant, as a detective, gang unit, patrol officer, campus officer. So he's been around the block quite a bit and knows what he's doing, and you guys are in very good hands with him at the helm until you select your new chief. And with that, we're going to jump right into this quick presentation. It's just going to be a quick overview of school police. The School Police Department has the responsibilities of providing safety and security for all students, staff, and visitors at our district sites. We coordinate with the district emergency manager in planning and coordinating our training, drills, and actual emergency events. We also coordinate with local law enforcement, fire, and emergency personnel during active incidents. And then obviously, we also work with them during non-active incident times for training and coordination as well. Just a few pictures here of the fun part of our job when we're out in our community and we're out with our kids, enjoying their accomplishments and celebrations. And one of my favorite photos is on my right, there with the officer kneeling down with the little girl with the balloons. She was so ecstatic. We all remember that day quite a bit. That little girl was having a rough time, and that officer, that was all done on his own. That wasn't a department event. That was nothing that he was directed to do by his supervisor. That was something that he recognized that he could do for this little girl and completely changed her whole school year. So that's what school policing is about right there. So a quick overview of the department, the breakdown, if you will. We have a chief, a deputy chief, and one lieutenant position. We have four sergeant positions. Then we have our campus officers and our patrol officers. We do have officers assigned to incline patrol. That officer covers all three schools up at the lake. We have a detective unit, a motor unit. We have officers assigned to the regional gang unit. We have our newest K-9 officer that you guys have all met, Astro, everyone's favorite. And then on the civilian side of the house, we have my executive assistant, Julie Kemp, which I'll just take a quick second to give her a huge shout out and thanks for mine and raise success. Julie's the one behind the scenes, you know, making things happen every single day, and there's not a person in this department that could do their job every day without Julie doing what Julie does. So thank you very much, Julie. We have our wonderful dispatchers. We just welcome the new dispatcher on boards. We're getting them fully staffed as well. We have our Safe Routes to School program. You'll see a little asterisk there because one position in Safe Routes to School is a sworn position, which is an officer position, and the other is a civilian position. So we have two people in the Safe Routes to School, and you guys have heard from them a couple different times as well. They work largely with getting our kids safely to and from school on walking or on wheels, so skateboards, bicycles, that type of thing, and encouraging more people to do so so we can free up that congestion in our parking lots. We have our Emergency Management Department, our Victim Advocate, and also the fingerprinting, which is now being converted to backgrounds unit now with the outsourcing of fingerprinting itself to an outside agency. But we still maintain the ability to fingerprint, and we'll also still do all the necessary background checks to comply with NRS in-house. And then just want to give you guys a quick example of kind of a patrol beat and how that works. That's probably one of the biggest questions we get is like, how are your officers deployed? So the gang unit is pretty self-explanatory, a K-9 is self-explanatory. But when it comes to our campus and patrol, this is kind of how it breaks down. So at our traditional high schools, so in our example here, you have Spanish Springs at the top of the pyramid. So you have a campus officer that's assigned to that school, and they're at that school for that entire school year. That's where they show up every day, and they police that school and become a part of that school community. Then for the patrol aspect of it, that patrol officer is assigned to the Spanish Springs High School patrol beat area. That beat would consist of the middle schools that feed up into Spanish Springs High School. So in this instance, we have Shaw and Sky Ranch. And then below that, you have the elementary schools. So you have Bowhatch, Hall, Spanish Springs, Taylor, Van Gorder, and Sepulveda. So that's our traditional structure of our beats. So that patrol officer has a large geographical area and a lot of schools underneath them. So they also, in addition to their middle and high school, or I'm sorry, elementary and high schools, they do assist the campus officer at the high school during those peak times, before school, after school, and at lunch. So that's the general beat structure of our officers and how the district's laid out currently. As you know, you have a new chief coming in, so that may change. But as it stands for right now, that's the beat structure for the remainder of this school year, I would assume. And one of the nice things about this is it allows our officers to be in their area for at a minimum that school year. They do bid for their beats every year or their assignments based on seniority, but more often times than not, an officer will choose to stay in an area for multiple years. So that gives them a really good opportunity to build those relationships with the staff there, with the students there, parents, and community, and the outside law enforcement agency that works in that area as well, and the fire department as well. So they all become pretty tight-knit, and they get to know one another pretty well. And it's also common to have a campus officer will spend a couple of years at a high school campus and then want to bid that patrol area, so they still stay connected to that high school. And that, yes, absolutely. So yeah, a little history note there. That's how we met Kristen, our Dr. McNeil. She was a brand-new principal, and Ray was the patrol officer in that area, and I was a brand-new motor officer, and she had nothing but problems at her school. So Ray and I came and basically fixed all that for her. But, and now here she is, so successful. But... But that's the kind of relationships that we build, and it's important to build those relationships. And you know, when you have that historical background with each other, and as you kind of rise through those ranks, you remember kind of where everybody came from and the struggles that you've been through, and you can appreciate each other and help them along the way as well. So some of the regional partnerships we have, we have the gang unit, the heat unit, which is the human exploitation and trafficking, which is overseen by Reno Police Department, the motor unit. So oftentimes, our motor units will work with the regional agencies, Reno Sparks and Washoe County, and they'll do what's called joining forces, which is a state-sponsored, grant-funded activity where they'll focus on a specific area like Click It or Ticket, which is a seatbelt campaign, or they'll focus on crosswalk safety or speed. And grant funds cover the overtime expenses to go out and do those enforcement areas. And then oftentimes, we will also work with the other motor units outside of that, just if we're having a problem in a specific area with speeding or might be reckless driving in an area, any of those types of things. Our Victim Advocate is very tied in with the local community, with the other victim advocates, and the district attorney's office works very closely with them. Our Emergency Management has always been very closely tied in with our regional emergency and management, because as you guys all know, the school district is a very valuable partner for any sort of regional emergency that comes up. And whenever there's a wildfire or a flooding incident or a fire in an apartment complex, anything like that, one of the first calls they're making is to the school district emergency manager to see if there's anything we can do to help as far as busing, shelter. A lot of times, our gyms are used for shelters, temporary shelters, those types of things with the Red Cross. We work with the district attorney. We meet with them quite often, actually, to make sure that we're on the same page as far as criminal prosecutions, what they need from us, if there's any changes in juvenile law that we need to be aware of, or if we're having issues in prosecution, then we can meet with them, and we have a very open lines of communication with the district attorney's office on that. And then, of course, Jan Evans Juvenile Justice Center. We're in constant contact with them daily, sending reports, touching base with them, seeing what they need from us as far as, you know, when we're taking juveniles to the detention facility or working with juveniles who are on parole or probation, to make sure that everyone's coordinating on that and kind of wrap services around some of those students that need that. Battery died, JJ? Uh-oh. Guess that's the end, JJ. No more clicking. Oh, there we go. All right. So this is probably the picture I've ended with for a lot of presentations. I'm sure you guys have seen it, but I just, one, I love motors, and two, it's just so fun to see these kids piled on that motorcycle like that and just having a big time and smiling. But that wraps up what school police is all about. And whether you like motorcycles, you don't like motorcycles, or it really doesn't have anything to do with it, it's the fact that that's the difference between school police and our traditional law enforcement partners. We all have a job to do in this community when it comes to law enforcement, but that's our job, is keeping those kids safe and building that relationship with these kids, so that when these kids encounter Reno Sparks or Washoe County, whether they're a teenager or an adult, their first contact with law enforcement was a positive one.
And I can say from experience, I have watched that joy and that connection happen on our schools with our school police officers. The kids are there, they want to know what they watched on the weekend. I mean, it's just the bond that's created there, and knowing that we're all on the same side in terms of keeping everyone safe and our own individual responsibilities is really remarkable. And I'm so proud of the school police department and very, very grateful to our interim chief, who has stepped up and will serve his colleagues while we're in the process of naming a permanent replacement. So thank you so much. And thank you so much, retired Deputy Chief Price, for everything that you've done. Our school police is a model of service and dedication, and we can't do what we do without our kids and our staff being safe, and that's what you deliver on. And we're so honored, and hopefully we'll be growing your ranks with future, well, I should say, previous motions that this board has made, because we do take this very seriously, and we value you considerably on the WCSD team.
Thank you very much, President Smith. So yes, these gentlemen, we go way back, probably longer than we would ever fully admit as far as the trials and tribulations, but also the celebrations that we've been through. I promised myself I wasn't going to do this. Goodness gracious, it's my first meeting back, and I'm already tearing up. But I also want to recognize your better halves that are also, that are there to support you. And we have Ms. Trevino in the audience. There she is. And is Ms... Is she watching? Well, hello, Ms. Price. But the love and support that these two gentlemen have given their officers, and they can't see behind themselves, but I just want you all to look behind you and see all the people that are there to support you. So it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with each of you through everything that we have been through. Really dark days in our district, but then also the best days, and that's a best day. Thank you, guys.
All right. So seeing no lights on, JJ, do we have any public comment for this item?
I have none.
All right. Now we will move on to the reading of the board resolution, which will be started by Clerk Rodriguez and followed with Trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Proclaiming January 9th, 2024, Law Enforcement Recognition Day in the Washoe County School District. District. Whereas, the Washoe County School District is proud home of 33 sworn law enforcement officers who work within our schools to ensure a safe and learning and working environment for our students, staff, and visitors. And whereas, our law enforcement officers strive to follow the WCSD promise of knowing every student by name, strength, and need, so they graduate prepared for the future they choose in partnership with our families and community. Whereas, our school police officers work directly with our students to bridge gaps between the youth and law enforcement through a positive relationship and mentoring. And...
As a retired Reno PD Sergeant, I'm proud to read this. Whereas, the dedicated leadership of the school police department has created a national model of effective community policing and promoting a positive image of law enforcement. And whereas, our school police officers serve on the regional gang unit and the human exploitation and trafficking, heat, unit with other law enforcement agencies, to protect both students and the community at large. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees proclaims January 9th, 2024, as Law Enforcement Recognition Day in the Washoe County School District, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees calls on our community to show their appreciation and support of our school police officers adopted this 9th day of January, 2024.
So, this is an item for action, so I'll be looking for a motion in just a moment. So, today, for all of you who want to get your phone out and Google it, January 9th is this day. It is actually this day. And it is also another day. It is Chief Trevino's birthday. Is it not? We thought it was Friday. Oh, you're, the date of your retirement is your birthday. Okay, okay. So, I will not, I will not have you be born early. Okay, so Friday, I think, when they said it's your birthday, I thought today was literally your birthday. The date of your retirement is your actual birthday. What a fantastic day that is. All right. Well, thank you. Sorry for mixing up the birthday, but the retirement day is fantastic. So, congratulations all around. And now, I see a light on for our motion. Your light is on. Well, you don't have to make the motion, but I saw your light on, so. Okay. Clerk Rodriguez?
I would be honored to make this motion. Thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 24-002, a resolution proclaiming January 9th, 2024 Law Enforcement Recognition Day in Washoe County School District.
I second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Nicolet, seconded by Trustee Westlake. And so, let's have some discussion on the motion. We'll start with Clerk Rodriguez, followed by Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank you guys for your service and all the officers. I, I know a lot of the, the community does not know the entirety of what your department does. And I, I know, being out there patrol on the highways, you know, a lot of times, school PD stopped out to me covering me, and it was fantastic. I know Dr. McNeil mentioned the darkest days, and one that I really remember was serving with three officers during the Reno riots, school police officers as part of our team. We had troopers, two FBI agents, and three school police officers. Then, our darkest day. And I'd only, the community recognizes the amount of work in and around our school districts that you guys provide. And I believe you guys actually responded to the street vibration shooting too, right? So, I mean, you guys have done a lot, and I, I wish our community even just knew half of what the job that you men and women perform every day is. So, I'm truly grateful for you, all of you, as a parent and as a community member. So, thank you all for what you do, and I hope you guys enjoy those donuts. So, I know we bought some donuts, the trustee scum.
All right. Trustee Woodley, followed by Trustee Westlake and Church.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to thank you, Chief, for your service and Assistant Chief as well. Thank you very much. Hope you guys enjoy your retirement. And I want to acknowledge the hard work that you and your staff do every day. I've had the privilege of communicating with your employees in my day job, and that radio and that dispatch is busy all day during the day. I think I had this discussion with Trustee Rodriguez. I think we talked that Washoe County School District Police is the heaviest day shift of all law enforcement agencies in the area. So, we thank you for that, and we thank you for keeping our schools safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate you so much for the service that you've provided the school district. Thank you for the courtesy that you've extended me to inform me and get me caught up to speed to what you do for our kids. And it's obviously, the most important thing is keeping them safe, but I feel just as important is the positive mentorship, the kindness, the grace, the support that the kids are shown. And I've seen that firsthand from the officers in the school district, and it, it, it doesn't go unnoticed, and it truly is valued and appreciated. And I just wish you well on your next endeavors, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and ditto for what everybody else said. You know, what's so important about our relationship with the kids, with the school police, is what doesn't get reported, the suicides you prevent, the fights you prevent. The prevention never makes the news, and that, that goes 100 to 1 versus the things that do make the news. So, that, you know, that is why it's important we have the school police. You know, if we contracted it out, you get a different deputy or different officer every day. They don't know the kids. They don't know the beat. That's just so important. And I've attended some safety conferences where it's not done this way. Most of them do contract with the sheriff or whatever. So, I just think that's so important for the public to know. And as a retiree, I'm always curious if you want to say, or we'll find out down the road, what your retirement plans are. Deputy Chief Price, I don't think you got to talk at all, in case you want to say anything, but you're more than welcome to chime in. Thank you.
I've already been in the works. I've got a separate company, consulting company, Forge and Fortify. So, I'm teaching biz, small businesses, basically stuff that I was doing in the school, active assailant, pepper spray, just, you know, safety in that. And then, I teach jujitsu at, a couple of my students opened up a school, so I teach jujitsu on three nights a week.
And I got a good plug in for you.
This is a real wonderful moment. You've worked so hard, and yet, it's a sad moment. I started out with Safe and Healthy Schools Commission in 2010, and, and the way that the police force for Washoe County School District embraced growth, improvement, all along the way is exemplary. It wasn't always easy. Change is not always easy, but yet, the police force did what it had to do to be the best it could be, to do the best you could for our students, because you recognize that you are an integral part of their life, and you always will be. They'll, they'll think about you for a very, very, very long time. I am certain of that. And Deputy Price, I wish you well with your new endeavor. And Chief, stay safe on those mountain climings. Make sure your GPS is turned on, so if something happens, they know where you are. And good luck, and thank you for serving interim for us. You guys, you guys rock it. We are so blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I, there's not much more I can say than already been said. So, I just, again, Chief Trevino, Deputy Chief Price, best of luck to you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for stepping up. Those four stars look really good on your color. I, I do want to underscore, as you said, Chief Trevino, some of the things you brought up in your presentation, the work that you do is, is a little different policing, building those relationships with our youngsters, being approachable. As a dad with two, with two students in the district, I see it. I'm always, I just have a sense of gratitude and comfort when I see our school police officers. They're always smiling. They're always positive, and I'm grateful for that. So, thank you for, for creating that culture, and God bless both of you. Thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you for everyone. We appreciate you. Your service is an honor, and it's a standard that we live up to. So, thank you. All right. So, we have a motion by Trustee Westlake, seconded by, no, no, that's right. As with the say, it's been a while since we made the motion. So, our motion by Trustee Nicolet, seconded by Trustee Westlake, and all those in... Yeah, they read the resolution. So, wait, I think the motion by, was by Trustee Nicolet, seconded by Trustee, we've already made so many motions today, seconded by Trustee Westlake. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose, nay. All right. Motion carries unanimously, as deserved, seven to zero. And now, we'd love to take some photos. Thank you. Thank you. All right, everyone. So, we'll go ahead and close. Item 5.01, and thank you again to all of our officers who were here. And we move on to item 5.02. This is an item for presentation only. It is another moment of celebration for us. Item 5.02 is the presentation of the following Nevada Association of School Boards, also known as NASB awards. The 2023 NASB New School Board Member of the Year is me, although I should probably say Elizabeth Smith, Board President. And the 2023 NASB School Administrator of the Year for the entire state of Nevada is Stacy Black, Principal at Burlat K-12 School. This is a very exciting item, and to bring us through it, we welcome Mike Walker. He is the president-elect of the Nevada Association of School Boards, and Mr. Walker also sits on the Board of Trustees for the Carson City School District. And so, we welcome him to walk us through this item.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees. It's an honor to join you at your school board meeting and see a little bit of how the neighbors do business. And, and also to check up on Neil. We go back a little bit. So, one of the most exciting things that NASB gets to do is to recognize educators, support staff, and friends of education who are making an impact in our schools and doing exceptional work in our communities. And so, we had in a conference about a month ago, and two of your award winners were not able to join us. And so, we wanted to bring the recognition to them. And in addition to recognition from NASB, I also have congressional special recognition from Senator Rosen's office, which we have for you also. So, just a little bit of the information that NASB based their awards on. So, it is with great pleasure that we recognize President Beth Smith as the NASB New School Board Member of the Year. She was appointed to the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees in July of 2021. Beth has exhibited unwavering commitment to outstanding leadership. She was elected as Board President twice now, and has navigated challenges with calm courage, emphasizing collaboration with the benefit of the Washoe County's 61,000 school, students. Despite personal health challenges, Beth's dedication hasn't wavered. She has attended every one of your meetings, as you all know, and is still visiting schools and exemplifying professionalism and dedication. We proudly recognize Beth Smith for as the NASB 2023 New School Board Member of the Year. Congratulations, President Smith.
And I think when we get done, Stacy and I will come up and do some photos. And in case anyone's wondering, new in this context means your first term. So, because people have asked me that, what does new exactly mean? But, new means your first term of service.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
And I, and I apologize. I should have also mentioned that I'm here with a familiar face for all of you, Mr. Szczesinski, who is your former finance guy. And I'll tell you, you guys got lucky, because you have the more conservative duo, because our executive director, Rick Harris, and President Wade Poulsen treated us all to a lip sync Blues Brothers routine. So, you're getting the, the professional presentation.
Um, if, if I could, um, Mr. Walker, I would like to say thank you. Um, if, if I could, um, Mr. Walker, I would like to say thank you. Um, if, if I could, um, Mr. Walker, I would like to say thank you. Uh, I, I did attend the NASB conference. Uh, I, I did attend the NASB conference. Uh, I, I did attend the NASB conference. I did have to leave before the awards ceremony that evening. I did have to leave before the awards ceremony that evening. I did have to leave before the awards ceremony that evening. It is not lost on me what an honor this is. It really is. It is not lost on me what an honor this is. It really is. It is not lost on me what an honor this is. It really is. Um, when I applied for the appointment to the Washoe County School Board, Um, when I applied for the appointment to the Washoe County School Board, Um, when I applied for the appointment to the Washoe County School Board, I could have never dreamed all the things that laid ahead. I could have never dreamed all the things that laid ahead. I could have never dreamed all the things that laid ahead. But I knew that my North Star were kids and teachers in our community. But I knew that my North Star were kids and teachers in our community. But I knew that my North Star were kids and teachers in our community. And everything that my board and this district and our community has seen from me And everything that my board and this district and our community has seen from me And everything that my board and this district and our community has seen from me is my heart shining through. is my heart shining through. is my heart shining through. And even on the days that are longer, And even on the days that are longer, And even on the days that are longer, I always wake up the next day reinvigorated by the fact I always wake up the next day reinvigorated by the fact I always wake up the next day reinvigorated by the fact that we're here to do good things and to advance public education, that we're here to do good things and to advance public education, that we're here to do good things and to advance public education, which is something that I am very passionate about. which is something that I am very passionate about. which is something that I am very passionate about. And I'm so honored to do it with these people by my side And I'm so honored to do it with these people by my side And I'm so honored to do it with these people by my side and for the people in this community. and for the people in this community. and for the people in this community. And to be recognized in this way is deeply heartfelt. And to be recognized in this way is deeply heartfelt. And to be recognized in this way is deeply heartfelt. Um, because honestly, sometimes there isn't a lot of recognition for the work that we do. Um, because honestly, sometimes there isn't a lot of recognition for the work that we do. Um, because honestly, sometimes there isn't a lot of recognition for the work that we do. And that's okay, because that's, we're not here for accolades. And that's okay, because that's, we're not here for accolades. And that's okay, because that's, we're not here for accolades. Please know though, that this is something that touches me dearly. Please know though, that this is something that touches me dearly. Please know though, that this is something that touches me dearly. And I'm very grateful to the NASB Board of Directors and their executive group And I'm very grateful to the NASB Board of Directors and their executive group And I'm very grateful to the NASB Board of Directors and their executive group and all of the members for choosing me for this honor. Thank you so much. and all of the members for choosing me for this honor. Thank you so much. and all of the members for choosing me for this honor. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's well deserved, and we are proud of you. You're welcome. It's well deserved, and we are proud of you. You're welcome. It's well deserved, and we are proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Also, um, recognizing an outstanding school administrator. Also, um, recognizing an outstanding school administrator. Also, um, recognizing an outstanding school administrator. So Stacy Black was selected for the 2023 NASB School Administrator of the Year. So Stacy Black was selected for the 2023 NASB School Administrator of the Year. So Stacy Black was selected for the 2023 NASB School Administrator of the Year. Stacy's 15-year career in Washoe County School District Stacy's 15-year career in Washoe County School District Stacy's 15-year career in Washoe County School District has been characterized by unwavering dedication. has been characterized by unwavering dedication. has been characterized by unwavering dedication. She started as a teacher, progressed to a dean and assistant principal, She started as a teacher, progressed to a dean and assistant principal, She started as a teacher, progressed to a dean and assistant principal, becoming the fir-, before becoming the first, uh, Gerlach K-12 school principal. becoming the fir-, before becoming the first, uh, Gerlach K-12 school principal. becoming the fir-, before becoming the first, uh, Gerlach K-12 school principal. Ms. Black has fostered a tight-knit community in her unique school, Ms. Black has fostered a tight-knit community in her unique school, Ms. Black has fostered a tight-knit community in her unique school, serving fewer than two dozen students, serving fewer than two dozen students, serving fewer than two dozen students, which makes me as a principal a little bit jealous. which makes me as a principal a little bit jealous. which makes me as a principal a little bit jealous. She ingeniously taps into the community's strengths, She ingeniously taps into the community's strengths, She ingeniously taps into the community's strengths, leveraging an artist-in-residence program leveraging an artist-in-residence program leveraging an artist-in-residence program and partnering with the Amazon Fulfillment Center for Resources. and partnering with the Amazon Fulfillment Center for Resources. and partnering with the Amazon Fulfillment Center for Resources. Stacy's creative approach to diverse learning methods ensures success for all Gerlach students. Stacy's creative approach to diverse learning methods ensures success for all Gerlach students. Stacy's creative approach to diverse learning methods ensures success for all Gerlach students. Her commitment, advocacy, and leadership make Stacy not only an amazing administrator, Her commitment, advocacy, and leadership make Stacy not only an amazing administrator, Her commitment, advocacy, and leadership make Stacy not only an amazing administrator, but also a deserving candidate for this prestigious award. but also a deserving candidate for this prestigious award. but also a deserving candidate for this prestigious award. So congratulations, um, Principal Black. So congratulations, um, Principal Black. So congratulations, um, Principal Black.
And Principal Black, we'd love for you to come up and say a few words if you'd like. And Principal Black, we'd love for you to come up and say a few words if you'd like. And Principal Black, we'd love for you to come up and say a few words if you'd like. And then, uh, Principal Black and I will take some photos after this. And then, uh, Principal Black and I will take some photos after this. And then, uh, Principal Black and I will take some photos after this. I know we've been taking a lot of photos today. We're done with the photos, I think, after this. I know we've been taking a lot of photos today. We're done with the photos, I think, after this. I know we've been taking a lot of photos today. We're done with the photos, I think, after this.
It's a great day for celebration. It's a great day for celebration. It's a great day for celebration. Thank you, Mike, and the National Association of School Boards, trustees, Thank you, Mike, and the National Association of School Boards, trustees, Thank you, Mike, and the National Association of School Boards, trustees, district leadership, and my personal mentors, district leadership, and my personal mentors, district leadership, and my personal mentors, Principal Katie Hadley and Principal Jake Chapin, for, um, being here with me today. Principal Katie Hadley and Principal Jake Chapin, for, um, being here with me today. Principal Katie Hadley and Principal Jake Chapin, for, um, being here with me today. It is such an honor to share the recognition and support It is such an honor to share the recognition and support It is such an honor to share the recognition and support you have given to me and the Gerlach K-12 school. you have given to me and the Gerlach K-12 school. you have given to me and the Gerlach K-12 school. Gerlach is an isolated place, and it's easy to forget Gerlach is an isolated place, and it's easy to forget Gerlach is an isolated place, and it's easy to forget that it exists in a thriving district like Washoe County. that it exists in a thriving district like Washoe County. that it exists in a thriving district like Washoe County. But I think the challenges of Gerlach make it a place But I think the challenges of Gerlach make it a place But I think the challenges of Gerlach make it a place where ideals of education can become reality. where ideals of education can become reality. where ideals of education can become reality. Einstein said creativity is seeing what others see and thinking what no one else ever thought. Einstein said creativity is seeing what others see and thinking what no one else ever thought. Einstein said creativity is seeing what others see and thinking what no one else ever thought. We have gotten creative at our school. We have gotten creative at our school. We have gotten creative at our school. Students learn through a blend of online coursework, Students learn through a blend of online coursework, Students learn through a blend of online coursework, brick-and-mortar instruction, and we, real-world experiences. brick-and-mortar instruction, and we, real-world experiences. brick-and-mortar instruction, and we, real-world experiences. Families are in constant communication with their educators. Families are in constant communication with their educators. Families are in constant communication with their educators. Staff work tirelessly to make sure students are learning and families are cared for. Staff work tirelessly to make sure students are learning and families are cared for. Staff work tirelessly to make sure students are learning and families are cared for. When we push the walls of our buildings as the accepted boundaries for learning, When we push the walls of our buildings as the accepted boundaries for learning, When we push the walls of our buildings as the accepted boundaries for learning, the people, ideas, and experiences that create education the people, ideas, and experiences that create education become more expansive and inclusive. the people, ideas, and experiences that create education become more expansive and inclusive. become more expansive and inclusive. We've brought in tens of thousands of fundraising dollars through outreach each year, We've brought in tens of thousands of fundraising dollars through outreach each year, We've brought in tens of thousands of fundraising dollars through outreach each year, welcomed experts in their fields to come guest lecture, welcomed experts in their fields to come guest lecture, welcomed experts in their fields to come guest lecture, established visiting artists, and hosted fine arts performances for students and the local community, established visiting artists, and hosted fine arts performances for students and the local community, established visiting artists, and hosted fine arts performances for students and the local community, and built a robust field trip program to support learning beyond the classroom walls. and built a robust field trip program to support learning beyond the classroom walls. and built a robust field trip program to support learning beyond the classroom walls. As a result, our town is invested in our school as a place where they are welcome. As a result, our town is invested in our school as a place where they are welcome. As a result, our town is invested in our school as a place where they are welcome. Families are invested in the care shown for their kids, Families are invested in the care shown for their kids, Families are invested in the care shown for their kids, and staff are invested in their impact on student lives. and staff are invested in their impact on student lives. and staff are invested in their impact on student lives. I am so grateful in receiving this award to know in my heart I am so grateful in receiving this award to know in my heart I am so grateful in receiving this award to know in my heart that our district and the state of Nevada are invested in the success of our school. that our district and the state of Nevada are invested in the success of our school. that our district and the state of Nevada are invested in the success of our school. Thank you for your recognition and support of me and the Gerlach K-12 school. Thank you for your recognition and support of me and the Gerlach K-12 school. Thank you for your recognition and support of me and the Gerlach K-12 school. It means so much to me. Thank you. It means so much to me. Thank you. It means so much to me. Thank you.
Um, so first I'll open it up to my colleagues before we do the certificates and the awards Um, so first I'll open it up to my colleagues before we do the certificates and the awards Um, so first I'll open it up to my colleagues before we do the certificates and the awards to see if there's any comments, and I know trustee Westlake has something. to see if there's any comments, and I know trustee Westlake has something. to see if there's any comments, and I know trustee Westlake has something.
Thank you, President Smith, President Beth, Principal Stacy. Thank you, President Smith, President Beth, Principal Stacy. Thank you, President Smith, President Beth, Principal Stacy. I just want to say it has been such an honor to get to know these two women I just want to say it has been such an honor to get to know these two women I just want to say it has been such an honor to get to know these two women and their love for the kids in our school district. and their love for the kids in our school district. and their love for the kids in our school district. I have had the honor to, to meet both of you, I have had the honor to, to meet both of you, I have had the honor to, to meet both of you, work hand in hand with one of you, and talk, to call Principal Stacy a friend. work hand in hand with one of you, and to talk, to call Principal Stacy a friend. work hand in hand with one of you, and to talk, to call Principal Stacy a friend. And I am so proud of both of you. And I am so proud of both of you. And I am so proud of both of you. And I can't think of two more loving, kind, supportive women And I can't think of two more loving, kind, supportive women And I can't think of two more loving, kind, supportive women that deserve these, this honor. that deserve these, this honor. that deserve these, this honor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Clerk Rodriguez? Clerk Rodriguez? Clerk Rodriguez?
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
I just want to say Gerlach, because in District C, it's the same.
I just want to say Gerlach, because in District C, it's the same.
Just want to say Gerlach, because in District C, it's the same. Um, no, I, I, uh, well firstly, Principal Black, uh, congratulations on being principal.
Um, no, I, I, uh, well firstly, Principal Black, uh, congratulations on being principal.
Um, no, I, I, uh, well firstly, Principal Black, uh, congratulations on being principal.
It's long overdue. Uh, so I'm glad that's something that the district was able to, one,
It's long overdue. Uh, so I'm glad that's something that the district was able to, one,
It's long overdue. Uh, so I'm glad that's something that the district was able to, one,
take a first step of recognizing, and then to follow by the Nevada Association of School Boards
take a first step of recognizing, and then to follow by the Nevada Association of School Boards
to follow behind and, and recognize that you're, you're doing a lot out there.
to follow behind and, and recognize that you're, you're doing a lot out there.
And, uh, trust that you're not forgotten.
And, uh, trust that you're not forgotten.
Uh, we, this board, this, we root for you guys.
Uh, we, this board, this, we root for you guys.
And, uh, and just thank you for everything you're doing.
And, uh, and just thank you for everything you're doing.
Really blessed to have you out there, and, and that community is very fortunate to have you.
Really blessed to have you out there, and, and that community is very fortunate to have you.
Be the rock of that community there.
Be the rock of that community there. And Beth.
And Beth. Uh, um, as the gentleman said, I mean, especially fighting the fights that you had,
Uh, um, as the gentleman said, I mean, especially fighting the fights that you had,
and continue to serve as our president and, and going through election cycle,
and continue to serve as our president and, and going through election cycle,
and all the work that you're doing, and the unsung work that the community doesn't see.
and all the work that you're doing, and the unsung work that the community doesn't see.
I, I'm glad you're our president, and I, uh, I think these awards are just a first step
I, I'm glad you're our president, and I, uh, I think these awards are just a first step
to really recognizing you and Principal Black.
to really recognizing you and Principal Black.
You guys do a lot for our community, and thank you.
You guys do a lot for our community, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yeah, Principal Black, congratulations. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yeah, Principal Black, congratulations. Uh, we're so proud of you. I, I don't think I really, trustee Rodriguez said what I was gonna say. Uh, we're so proud of you. I, I don't think I really, trustee Rodriguez said what I was gonna say. And that is we, we never forget about Gerlach. You're right. And that is we, we never forget about Gerlach. You're right. It's easy to forget about you, but, but we don't. It's easy to forget about you, but, but we don't. And we're grateful that you're out there and what you do to inspire, um, really, all the kids, And we're grateful that you're out there and what you do to inspire, um, really, all the kids, you know, K through 12. I mean, you, you have, I have you lived out there, you know, K through 12. I mean, you, you have, I have you lived out there, and you, you've done a remarkable job. So thank you for your service. and you, you've done a remarkable job. So thank you for your service. Please continue to do what you're doing. Please continue to do what you're doing. Uh, Principal Smith, thank you for your continued leadership, for stepping up again. Uh, Principal Smith, thank you for your continued leadership, for stepping up again. Um, you are truly a rock. You are a leader Um, you are truly a rock. You are a leader that I'm looking forward to continue to, to learn from. that I'm looking forward to continue to, to learn from. And I know from our families, our staff, many teachers, uh, you are held in, in, in high regard. And I know from our families, our staff, many teachers, uh, you are held in, in, in high regard. And I'm, I'm grateful that you're in this, this organization. And I'm, I'm grateful that you're in this, this organization. I know what you have endured, uh, have, had to endure behind the scenes. I know what you have endured, uh, have, had to endure behind the scenes. Uh, a lot of, uh, of issues and, and challenges Uh, a lot of, uh, of issues and, and challenges that I think most will, will never really be able to comprehend and understand. that I think most will, will never really be able to comprehend and understand. So thank you for your continued help. So thank you for your continued help.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, let's get those awards. All right, Principal Black, come on up. Thank you. All right, let's get those awards. All right, Principal Black, come on up. Thank you.
All right, everyone, we'll bring everything back to order. While everybody comes back in the room, I will also point out that my colleagues, led by Clerk Rodriguez, gave me an official little gavel here. So like a little Roger Rabbit gavel that I can hit occasionally, too. Stressful, yeah. Well, thank you all so much. Today's obviously been a fantastic day so far. And now we open item 5.03. This is a presentation and discussion from the Discovery Museum and their partnership with the Washoe County School District, including how they support student academic success. This is an item for presentation and discussion. And we proudly welcome our CEO and President of the Discovery Museum, Matt Sinclair, and Kevin Perez, the Senior Director of Education of the Discovery Museum, led by Dr. Troy Parks.
Thank you, President Smith, and good evening, Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil and Board of Trustees. Yes, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer. And it is my honor to introduce one of our community partners that provides very important learning for our students and partners with our schools. I also want to acknowledge Trustee Nicolette, who led me into this opportunity to meet with them and plan this presentation. So today you are going to hear from Kevin Perez, the Senior Director of Education, and Matt Sinclair, the CEO and President. I want to give you a little preview that one of the things you're going to want to pay close attention to is the Mind Matters exhibit, which is coming to Reno. And as a district, we're really getting behind our partnership with the Discovery to encourage all of our students to go and participate in this great opportunity because it is about mental health and understanding where others are coming from. So this is going to be a tremendous opportunity to learn what our students can go and experience at this exhibit. So please welcome them.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
Perfect. Thank you. Can you hear me? My name is Kevin Perez, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the Senior Director of Education at the Discovery. And more importantly, I'm just really excited to tell you guys about our partnership and how we've worked with you guys throughout the year. So we're going to get started with a pretty impressive number, in my opinion, and that is 1.7 million. And that is the number of visitors we have engaged through our doors, one way or another, since we started back in 2011. So that's a big number, but how do we do it and what do we do? So the Discovery's mission is to, we seek to inspire. And it's a very broad and something that we take a lot of passion in, and we do that by being the place to experience science. We want to be the place that people can come to our doors from all over the world and really feel like they left with something. Okay? So a few quick visitor information numbers here for us. So like I said, 1.7 million visitors since opening. We opened up September 10th, 2011. Last year alone, we saw more than 200,000, we engaged with over 200,000 people, one way or another, through field trips, through camps, through our outreach program. And that's a number we're very, very proud of, and we're always looking to grow more. And really, the fact that makes us very unique is the fact that we are the most, we're visited for the cultural center and educational attraction more than Nevada. So not only people can come, but they feel like they belong to it. It's something that they, they take passion that it's in our community. Not every place has a place like this. So for us, to be in the community is a driving force behind a lot of the things with you, and I would say with you guys as well. So we, we do get, we get visitors from all over the place. About 18% travel more than 100 miles to visit us. And the cool thing is that we see students and people from all of our counties. So we have some counties in Nevada, we see every single one of them. A quick, so I have a couple of stories to tell, but this one is something that I really take passionate for. So as you guys know, the Bay Area has a lot of cool museums, big museums. And one thing that we always hear about is that people come to Reno to visit the Discovery because there's nothing like that in their home, where they feel like they come from. So for us, we take huge pride in that, knowing that people come from all over the place just to visit that. And I take even bigger pride in knowing that this is in our community, something that we get to experience, and we get to come for it, and it's open there for us. Okay? We're going to move here quickly. So how does it impact our Washoe County school students? So in the 2022-23 school year, we saw 11,490 students come in, grades K through eighth. So we offer standard-aligned lab activities that they can come in. The amazing thing about the partnership that we have is that we provide busing as well, so all transportations come, they just have to come here. And something that I'm really proud of is our financial assistance. So with financial assistance, we're able to bring in students who really don't get to come. And so we based off our FRL system. And just in the past, in 2023, we gave out about $63,000 on financial assistance for camps, field trips, museum admission, and all that stuff. So we don't just engage your students through field trips, we also engage them through camps, you know, there are hands-on STEM activities that we do. And a lot, about 10% of that is financial assistance. So we see about 10% of financial assistance campers. And we're always, you know, looking to increase it because we believe there's so much value in our camp program as well. There's something that, a story that I want to share with you guys is a driving story from one of your students about eight years ago. So I started the museum eight years ago. And really quickly into my, into my journey, we had a field trip lab that deals with drilling. They make a keychain out of wood. And we had a student who was blind. And this story really moves me because it was the first time that she was able to use real tools and not only use them, but feel guided through them and feel empowered to use them. With her aid, we kind of made a plan for her to not feel like she wasn't able to do that. And that's kind of like the stuff that we take and we drive forward. It's these little stories about impacting our students. And now that I think about it, she's about to graduate, so I always like, I always think about her, and I wish I could connect with her one more time, just because how powerful that story was. So these are the few things that we do with Washoe County. You know, we have a great, talking about financial assistance, we have great partners with the Red Field as well, with Pennington. They, we have schools that, with the Red Field coordinators that come to us, and they're able to bring their students through Red Field. They also find a lot of other financial assistance, so it's not just them, it's other people that can come. Okay? And really, we're always looking, how can we engage your students? So a lot of, for a lot of students, the only time they can visit the museum is through a field trip. So there's still a lot of students who don't come. And we have taken the mentality, well, if they're not coming to us, we're coming to them. So we're really, really excited to start our next step and the next step moving forward with our partnership with the Washoe County School District, and that is through our outreach program. So we were fortunate enough to have our van here, and currently, we're working on getting three options for every school out there. So we're going to go out there. We did a huge survey, we asked the teachers what is it that they needed. And we're doing great, specific, hands-on STEM programs in their classes. So we're going to the classes, we're bringing things that, you know, they normally wouldn't be able to do, or things that just take so much time to curate that can make it difficult. But everybody here knows the impact of hands-on science. So we're very happy that we're going to be able to provide a K through, we're starting off with K through fifth, so every grade is going to have something, knowing that every year they're going to see us, and every year they're going to experience something else, and it is standard-aligned. But then the other things we're really excited for is a science assembly program, where we go up to the schools and we provide just jaw-opening science experiments, where they go there and, you know, they just normally see things they wouldn't be able to. And the one I'm more excited about is the portable planetarium. So bringing these portable planetariums and bringing students into something, you know, everybody here remembers their first time in the planetarium. And it's an impactful one, and you will always remember that. So we want to be those, that experience for them and make sure it's a good one. So this is something we're working on, we're excited to get it out to you guys. And Matt here is going to talk a little bit about our Mind Matters program.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today and share a little bit about the Discovery and our impact on the community and servicing your students, our students. You know, Kevin laid out some pretty impressive numbers, and here's one more for you. All of that has happened in 12 years. We're 12 years old. We're a child still as an institution, and yet the impact that we've already accumulated is pretty impressive. One of the ways that we do that, we have a 70,000-square-foot facility. The Discovery is a private nonprofit institution, and so we receive no public funds for what we do. This is all earned income and contributed income from our very generous philanthropic community here in northern Nevada. One of the ways that we drive our impact is each year, in addition to all of the wonderful programs, exhibits, and activities that we have going in the museum, we work with other museums and institutions around the world to bring temporary exhibitions into our space. The first one that we brought is, it was Monster Fish, which was a partnership and collaboration with National Geographic and the University of Nevada, which featured Dr. Zev Hogan, a local researcher and National Geographic Explorer. It's an exhibit that we have again right now. In fact, its last days are this week. Shortly thereafter, we brought a T-Rex to northern Nevada. We put a T-Rex in our building, a T-Rex named Sue, after working with our friends and colleagues at the Field Museum in Chicago, Chicago, excuse me. We've brought other exhibitions. And the next one that we will open, opens on February 10th, and it comes all the way from Hurika Science Center in Helsinki, Finland, where it toured northern Europe for several years, and then in partnership with the Science Museum of Minnesota, was put together and brought to North America, where it's been touring for a couple of years. I first saw this exhibition more than 10 years ago and started thinking about how impactful something like this could be and the opportunity to bring it here. It's been on our watch list for a while, and a year and a half ago, we sat through the first inaugural youth mental health summit, and sitting in that summit, listening to our community come together around the subject of youth mental health, all the stars just perfectly aligned. And so we got on the phone with our colleagues at Minnesota, we picked up the phone and called some of our very generous donors, and in fairly short order, we've been able to align this exhibition. So on February 10th, this exhibit will open at the Discovery. It is a 5,000-square-foot exhibition designed to address the topics of mental health through a variety of hands-on and interactive experiences, so it will actually put visitors in some situations where they actually get to experience some aspects of mental health and have a discussion about this. Most importantly, this exhibition is designed to raise awareness and build empathy in folks, and really ultimately to de-stigmatize this very sensitive topic that we have around mental health. This is, like so many exhibits that we now host and have on permanent display, this is a bilingual exhibition, it's actually a tri-lingual exhibition, so we'll have it in English and Spanish, and if you're sound kind, French, not a class I passed in high school, but we'll have it anyway. And it includes a pretty robust resource center within the exhibit. In addition to this, we've decided to do something different that, to our knowledge, no other U.S. museum has done. In our minds, this exhibit was not enough. There was a greater opportunity for us to be the convener of a bigger conversation and make a greater impact with this exhibition. So for six months, our team has frantically been working with every mental health care provider, other nonprofit organizations, NGOs, anybody who even loosely classifies themselves in the space of mental health, has been invited to come to the table and work with us. And during the run of the exhibition, just about every single day, we will have one, two, 12 different partner organizations in our space, bringing their particular expertise and experience to build out this exhibition. So, you know, we're talking about things very traditionally from the university, pre-service teacher, or pre-service professionals in the mental health space, faculty members from the university will be in our space, but also great organizations like Notables Music Therapy, and we'll talk about the role that music plays in therapy and mental health. I've had a wonderful opportunity to go visit with and pet some of the wonderful clinicians at Lead with Horses, and we'll talk about the role of equine therapy. We have a whole host of program partners that will be in our space to really build out this experience that will run through, again now, thanks to one of our major supporters, through September. So we're going to have this exhibition on display for six months, making an impact in our community. So this is just one of the many, many ways that we work with you and your teachers and faculty. We're going to have a night where we get to have all of the school counselors come out and have a chance to see the space and work with us to ensure that we put as many students through on field trips. And we have donors who have earmarked specifically financial assistance funds, so that price is never going to be a barrier for participation. And so we're here today to share that with you. I encourage you to share that with your principals, your teachers, your families, and we want to, we want to see as many folks come through and have an opportunity to see this. So this is one example of many. We have, we have years of these great exhibits in the queue. And so with that, Kevin and I just want to thank you for your time today, and we're happy to take any questions about the Discovery and our time in service with you. Oh, we have a video. Sorry, I forgot about that part.
As, and I'm the Senior Director of Education here at the Discovery, and I'm excited to tell you about our next featured exhibition we're hosting here at the museum. Mental Health: Mind Matters is a large-scale exhibition that addresses the topic of mental health through a variety of hands-on, interactive, and role-playing activities. This award-winning exhibition was originally created by Hurika, the Finnish Science Center, and it was adapted for display in North America by the Science Museum of Minnesota. Designed to foster important conversations about an often taboo subject, Mental Health: Mind Matters uses hands-on, interactives, and immersive multimedia activities to give visitors an unforgettable experience exploring mental health and its prevalence and impact on society. With mental health challenges affecting so many of us currently, this exhibition presents an important and timely opportunity to start a conversation that will have long-lasting effects. Mental health is a personal issue, a social issue, and an economic issue, and it is time we take a closer look at how it touches all of our lives and what we can do to improve it. We invite you to bring your students to the Discovery to experience this important exhibition, and thanks to the generosity of our museum's owners, financial assistance to cover up to 100% of the cost of a field trip is available to schools that qualify. A standard-aligned lab activity and transportation are included as well. Mental Health: Mind Matters opens to the public at the Discovery on Saturday, February 10, 2024. To arrange a field trip for your class, or multiple field trips for an entire grade level, or for all your students in your school, please visit NVPM.org or call 775-398-5942.
Excellent. Now we're done. Yeah.
Nice job on the video.
Thank you.
This is incredible. So we are so honored to have different community partners come and present to us and to tell the story of the fantastic work that you're doing, because as a school district, we can't do everything on our own. And I hear from teachers how important it is to be able to reach out to other community educational partners to share in the work of educating our students. And the Discovery Museum is such a precious place for our community. My family has been going for the entire 12 years. I have a 13-year-old who still gets into the airplane and plays with it every single time. It's not just his little brother that gets in there. And from birthday parties to the joy of exploring and learning, it's a place that my family and I enjoy so much and has taught us so much, and that I genuinely enjoy as an adult, climbing through all the areas. I love the exhibit where it shows you, like, I mean, just really, really amazing. It's not a museum that just shows you things, it brings you into the education, into the experience, and we know so much that when children are engaged with their learning, they learn in a deeper and more significant way. And that's really what the Discovery Museum partners with us and allows us to do. And so I just want to say thank you so much for sharing in the joy of serving our kids and educating our kids as well. So it's just absolutely wonderful, and I will 100% be at this new exhibit, and I will mark that date in my calendar, so that we can come and check it out.
Thank you. It opens on February 10th through September 8th. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say something really quickly. You know, I was chief of staff in the school district when you all opened, and I worked alongside Karen Swob and all of the work that she was able to do on the beginning of your board. And we have some principals in the audience that absolutely, absolutely understand the importance of having our students go to the Discovery Museum through our field trip programs. So I just want to thank you all from the bottom of our hearts for all the times that you all have been our partners, from professional learning for our teachers, from opening up your doors to when we have a large group meeting there, but most significantly for our students and all of the support and learning opportunities, as President Smith stated, that you give to our students. So thank you very, very much for everything.
It's our pleasure.
Clerk Rodriguez followed.
Mr. Mayberry.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I got you. Did you want to start, Clerk Rodriguez?
You go ahead. First of all, thank you. I got kids from 19, I'm not such a kid anymore, to 2, 12, and so I've always loved what you guys offer, and it's amazing. I do kind of have a question, can you kind of elaborate a little bit more about like the music therapy? Kind of what does that look like? Because I know that's something I've been hearing about, can you kind of elaborate more on that?
Right. So one of the many partners that we're going to have come into the space is Notables Music Therapy. Notables is another fantastic nonprofit organization in our community that works with people of all ages to work through trauma, therapeutic issues, and using music, playing music, enjoying music, learning about music as a mechanism for doing so. Just like Lead with Horses uses equine therapy, presence of being around, you know, large, very large equines in some cases. The idea is using a separate entity or point of discussion as an entry point to various therapeutic opportunities and tools. Sometimes that's done in conjunction with healthcare providers and clinicians. Sometimes it's much more simple than that, and just the simple act of engaging in a healthy exercise results in healing and learning and growth.
All right. Trustee Church followed by Vice President McNeil.
Sure. So let's get some plugs in. What are your normal hours?
Excellent, yes. We are, we're open Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 5. Wednesdays, we stay open late, we stay open until 8 o'clock, and after 4 o'clock, our admission drops by more than half. So Wednesday evenings are very special nights. And then here's the asterisk to everything, whenever you guys have a day off, we don't. So when Washoe County schools are out for any reason on a Monday, we are open.
Nice. So you're generally closed Sunday?
Oh, sorry, we are open Sundays, noon to 5:00. So generally, we're closed on Mondays, again, unless you're closed.
Okay. And you mentioned field trips, is that outgoing field trips, or you mean you host field trips?
We host field trips. So we have schools coming to us, they're participating in a reserve lab program that's standards-aligned, they're getting curriculum pre and post, and then the field trip itself. And Kevin's portion of the presentation, just describing our larger partnership with the district, we're very excited that this is the first year of our outreach program, which is kind of what you're asking, which is the inverse of that field trip, which is us coming to you. And so now we can bring the museum experience in the back of our rig to your school.
All right. And final plug, location?
We're at 490 South Center Street.
So basically, center, Sinclair, Liberty, is that right, correct?
Correct. Right across the street from the federal building.
Okay.
Not hard to miss.
Thank you. No, I just, too, wanted to tell you what a gem you are, and I'm so grateful for the Discovery Museum. My daughters grew up there, and you know what? I did, too, because I still get in the airplane. And you can find me on the first floor, playing in the water with the Truckee River mock-up. It's just, it's just a wonderful, wonderful experience, and so I'm truly happy to hear from all of you. And just from one trustee, I would love to see us increase that 30% for our title schools. I really would, I think that would be a real noble goal. Thank you.
That's our, we share that goal, and just as a fun museum fact, I'll let you know that approaching 12 years old, we're right on the cusp, where any day now, we'll have our first group of parents come through the doors with their children, who came to the Discovery as children themselves. Yeah. That's exciting for all of you teenagers, right?
So that outreach program, so Principal Black, that was just here in Gourlack, how do I champion, again, your outreach program out there?
Yeah, so the best thing I would do is go to our website, go to, there's a tablet for outreach, and fill out the form there, we'll get in contact with you. It's just like filling up a field trip, and we'll reach out to you, we'll make it happen, we'll get the dates, and we're there.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to disclose that I am a co-chair with Mr. Perez on the Education Subcommittee for the Latino Leaders Stakeholders Board, so I want to disclose that. And at every meeting, he is always sharing and offering the facility for any type of community events. And over the past years, I've had other experiences with the Discovery Museum. It's very, very entertaining. There are always, you've always offered the facility to different organizations. I really appreciate the statement you made stating that price will not be a barrier to participation, and that's very important, really appreciate that. As a youth who was a very low-income poor, I took advantage of those types of opportunities, so I appreciate that you guys offer those opportunities. All of my experiences in that building as a Discovery Museum has been beautiful. For those of you who don't know, that used to be City Hall for the city of Reno, and my experiences prior were not as great. So thank you for changing that building.
Turn it around.
We're happy to do it.
Happy to do it.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Well, thank you so much. This was fantastic. We appreciate you, and please give our thanks to all of your staff members that also do this day in and day out for us. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, to my board and to the community, we're going to go ahead and do these next two items for presentation and discussion. That's item 5.04 and 5.05. Then we'll go ahead and take a brief recess as we get into the last two items, which are items for possible action. So on that note, we will go ahead and close item 5.03 and move on to item 5.04. And this is the presentation to update the Board of Trustees on the implementation and usage of the Eye Ready Assessment Tool throughout the elementary and middle schools in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we welcome again our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Troy Parks, our Director of Assessment, Dr. Sandra Arndt, our Associate Chief, Sarah Cunningham, and our Learning Facility our Associate Chief, Sarah Cunningham, and our Learning Facilitator from Anderson Elementary School, Kathleen Barnes. Welcome so much. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. Good evening again, Interim Superintendent McNeil and Board of Trustees. And we thank you for this opportunity to update you on our implementation of iReady. As we get started here, I want to remind us all that implementation of anything in a district requires a great partner as well as great leadership. So today, we have leaders at the district level, at the principal supervisory level, and at the site level that are going to share their experience in this first semester with iReady. And I just want to remind us all, our greatest resources are educators that utilize this tool. It is the people that we employ that are absolutely positively the greatest impact on our students. And while we present you this data and update, I want to acknowledge our educators in our schools that are making the difference for kids. And next slide, please. Just a reminder, we are all about making sure that we know every student by name, strength, and need. And we acknowledge that we want them to graduate prepared for the future that they choose. And as you heard from Discovery, we know we cannot do that without engaging our families and our community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Eard, who has been instrumental in leading this at the district level. And I want to acknowledge that one of the attachments that you received was created by her and her department to start this year, being very clear about what the district-wide expectations were. So please take it from there, Dr. Eard.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting us be here today, President Smith, Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil, and trustees. We are thrilled to be here and bring you an update on iReady. So again, iReady was selected as a tool for teachers. It is not a silver bullet for students. It is a tool for the teachers. But it is to support our strategic plan, looking at our pillars, consistent, standards-aligned curriculum and instruction. It does align with our standards that we follow. It is also to build that culture of excellence and accountability because of the many tools that are part of this program. It also supports our goal one, because it is a K8 tool for math and ELA, so it does touch our early childhood as well as, of course, goal number four, which is our academic achievement goal. Dr. Parks mentioned partnership. And we have a very new, but very strong partnership with Curriculum Associates, who is our vendor. We are in touch, our department is in touch with our vendor probably once a week, if not more. They were kind enough to create some data slides for us. So I want to navigate through our slide first, again, giving credit to Curriculum Associates. So it is a sophisticated slide and it has a lot of information. So let's just go through what this is telling us. This is from our first diagnostic in the fall. We gave the diagnostic to our students in grades K through 8. This slide represents our grade levels K through 5. So the grade levels are across the top. Each grade level is represented or has three graph bars below the grade level. The bars indicate, first of all, on the, for kindergarten, so on the right, we have the bar for Washoe County and how we did, how our students did on the first diagnostic. In the middle, Curriculum Associates has provided us with some data from the Council of Great City Schools, who are also participating in iReady program and the diagnostic one, so that we could look at how does Washoe County compare to other schools across the nation. And then also, just as a glimpse of pre-pandemic, they looked at and provided us with the national norm for students who participated in the 1819 school year in the fall. Just to look at where are we compared with pre-pandemic rates in the fall. So we have the pre-pandemic rate, we have the Council of Great City Schools, and then we have the district results for kinder first, second, third, fourth, and fifth on this slide. When you look at the slide, they break the student achievement into five categories. So the top category, the dark green, is the category where students achieved at mid or above their grade level, their enrolled grade level. So if you look at 5th grade, the Washoe County, which is furthest to the right, we had 11% of our 5th graders in reading, this is the reading slide, my apologies, in reading, we had 11% performing mid 5th grade or above in the fall. So keeping that in mind, so they were above grade level in the fall, or mid or above grade level in the fall. Below that is a lighter green. We had 15% of our 5th graders early on grade level. So they were smack dab right where they needed to be. They were early 5th grade. They were ready for 5th grade content. Below that, they break it into the percent of students who are one grade level below. So that's our yellow, 27% in 5th grade reading. And then we have the pink color, light red, the two grade levels below group. We had 28% of our 5th graders falling in that category with their results. And then the three or more grade levels below in the darker red categories. So they provide this information for us so that we can look and again, compare our school to other schools around the nation and also looking at pre-pandemic era for reading. One of the highlights, as you look at this data, and we're comparing our district for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade to the Council of Great City Schools collection of schools, so not just one, but a collection of various schools around the, of around the country. We are not far off. Our results are pretty similar to the results of the Great City Council, Council of Great City Schools schools. One point to bring into conversation, kindergarten, of course, cannot be more than two grade levels below. So there's nothing, there are no red indicators for kinder. Likewise, for first, you can't be three or more, et cetera. So that's why they are, do not have those indicators. Okay?
And before we move on, when I saw this, I thought that this was very enlightening personally. Something that I knew was important but did not fully understand until one of my colleagues, trustee Nicolette, really helped me understand more academically the importance of pre-K. But when I see kindergartners who have just entered our school system, okay, everyone? So before everybody starts pointing fingers, I mean, they just started. And I see this yellow group, to me, like this is a call to action for high-quality pre-K. That's what this is. Obviously, we have our own role here and we have our responsibilities. But I see loud and clear, and not just in the Washoe County School District, but you see it on the national norm before and among the other councils of great city schools, this to me is an opportunity for strengthening high-quality pre-K so that our youngest learners are entering their school education ready with the skills that they need to actually advance, not just your kindergarten but beyond. And so those are just some initial thoughts that I have when I look at this.
Thank you. One piece I do want to mention about our yellows is keeping in mind that students who took this assessment, our window started the Monday after school started, so it was the second week of school. Some of our students whose result fell in the yellow area might only have had that grade level instruction for a week before they took the assessment. So I am very excited about the middle of year, which we started today, and getting that result and seeing that green grow. I am, and the yellow shrink and the red shrink, I'm very excited about that, so. Another piece that, again, this is a reading slide that Curriculum Associates helps us with, is projections for our summative assessment. So when we're thinking about overall, we look at the Smarter Balance in this state as our summative assessment for reading and math. And with the diagnostic one data, they created, based on analysis from previous years, where they would predict or project that our students would fall, which level on the Smarter Balance, where those students would fall. To explain this and why we have two different bars, students receive, after the first diagnostic, students receive a typical growth goal. Each student receives an individual typical growth goal. Typical growth means that that student, if they achieve, it's a, it's a scale score. If they achieve that scale score by the end of the year, they would have made typical growth, which is one year's academic growth. So if all of our students from the diagnostic assessment met our typical growth, that's the top bar. If all of our students were on track to meet that typical growth, we, on Smarter Balance, they would project, and of course, that's not meaning that's exactly what will happen, but they project that about 12% of our students would be in level four proficiency, about 28% in level three proficiency. So that's a projection based on previous data with the Smarter Balance and the diagnostic one. The other piece that students receive after diagnostic one is a stretch goal. This is an ambitious goal. This is a goal where students would achieve more than a typical year's growth. They would be going above and beyond. This is really a goal with our students who are academically behind their peers, that we really want to encourage those students moving towards that stretch goal. Students who meet that stretch goal year after year, year over year, are more likely to close that achievement gap on the summative assessment as well as their daily academics. If our students were to achieve that stretch goal, and again, this is all of our students reaching that stretch goal, then the bottom grid is more what they would project it would look like, what our results would look like. We'd have about 22% of our students in a level four, about 37% in a level three. So it's, they divided it by the typical growth, which is one year's growth. That is great. If our students can meet typical growth, that is one year's growth. And when we adopted this program, as I remember, that is one of the things we really wanted to measure. We want to make sure our students make one year's academic growth each academic year. But then we also have stretch growth, which is that ambitious. Some of our students need to be making more than one year's growth to close those academic gaps. Those two slides were reading, and this is math. So they provide us, again, with information on both subject areas that we assess. And when we're looking at math, compared to reading, some of the things that we've noticed is that reading, we had in 3rd, 4th, and 5th, we had about 25 to 30% of our students in the green area. In math, we, it's reflecting that we have about 13% to 22% in that green area for the diagnostic number one. So that was just one of the big overviews, looking at the data on this piece. Likewise, on math, they did projections as well, or analyzed and made projections as well, looking at where our math would possibly fall out with our summative assessment, both for typical growth, if our students are achieving typical growth, and then if our students are achieving stretch growth. One of the other pieces, as Dr. Parks said, iReady is a tool. And it's a tool for the teachers to use to complement our already adopted curriculum. The tool, if it's not utilized, then it's not going to benefit our students nor our teachers. So we do, we started looking at our participation rates and our usage, student usage of our program, our online learning. Following the diagnostic one, those results are fed into a computer and the algorithms provide a student, a learning path that is individualized for that individual student. So it's starting them exactly where they need to be in both reading and math. Because it provides them individualized instruction, we would like to see those students on the learning path on a weekly basis. So our results are showing around 80% as an average, but you can see each week it kind of goes up and down. November 20th was Thanksgiving week, so keeping that in mind. Also, once we make sure that they have the opportunity to engage in the online learning, the MyPath, we also want to make sure that they are meeting a certain amount of minutes to make sure they're getting the benefit of the experience. And Curriculum Associates has done research and analysis to see that between 30 and 49 minutes a week per subject is the sweet spot. So the red rectangle represents the sweet spot. And as we go through, except for Thanksgiving week, our students who are on our program, on the learning path, are meeting that sweet spot. So we want to continue to improve and increase our percentage of students who are participating on a weekly basis. And we want to make sure that we are staying in an average somewhere between 30 and 49 minutes per subject. This is only math, but I do, it is very similar for reading as well. And next steps, this is a huge program. There are many, many, many components within this program, and it will take a lot of teacher training, of student training, of department training, going through the pieces of iReady. So we are starting our diagnostic number two. Our window started today. It goes through February 1st. I did peek right before we came in, and we have had about 100 students engaged with it today. So I'm excited to see those results. We also will have growth monitoring data reviews for principals, for central office, and for teachers on various dates. So we have Curriculum Associates coming out to provide those trainings for our staff. And then hopefully, we can present middle-of-the-year growth data when we present goal number four presentation later on in the year. So now, that's from my viewpoint as the Director of Assessment, but what you really want to know is, how is it going at the school sites? So today, we have Sarah Cunningham representing the Associate Chiefs to give us some insight about implementation, participation, lessons learned, and a path forward.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Smith. Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil and Board of Trustees, I appreciate you having us here today to talk about iReady. I'm going to speak on behalf of Associate Chiefs and the lift of implementing such a large program across all of our elementary and middle schools. So as Dr. Parks started us off today, that is a big lift. It's something new, however well-needed and received thus far. As Dr. Eard shared, our first goal with implementation was to get our students into their MyPath. So after that initial diagnostic assessment, our schools had to work hard to get a plan in place. How do we get all students in our building actively engaged in that sweet spot every week in reading and in math? And when you hear 30 minutes a week, oh, it's 30 minutes. Well, have you talked to kindergartners lately? You know, it's not always as easy. And time is something we don't always have enough of. And you ask teachers, what do they need? They need more time. And we can't give that. And so how we use our time is very important. So working with our principals to look at their master schedules, where does it make sense to have our students engage in their MyPath? What does that look like in an elementary level versus a middle school level? Looking at the devices we have in our buildings, how do we maximize those? So it has been school by school to the teacher level to work through that. And as we have noticed, we have jumped dramatically to about an 80% participation usage for our students meeting those goals of the 30 to 49 minutes in each area. So that was task number one. And then I suspect this week, as we are now assessing students with the diagnostic, which we need the devices for, you know, how are we going to engage in MyPath at that time? So these are the real issues our schools are dealing with every day. And again, this is not to replace the great quality teaching that we have in our classrooms. It is to enhance the instruction. So step one was to get our students engaged in the MyPath, and we set those expectations of that 30 to 49 minutes in each subject. And we really, everyone put their heads together. What does this look like in your building? Problem solving, working it out, and it's the brilliant minds, of course, of our educators to solve those problems and get creative. Each week, we share a report of usage data by area. So in elementary schools, because we have so many, we're broken into four areas, and we'll look at, say, Sarah Cunningham's area, Area 2, the percentage of students that are participating. And we don't break it down necessarily by schools, and we share that with the principals. There might be some friendly competition between Associate Chiefs. I might be losing, but that's okay. We're going to work on that, just to get the excitement about it. You, I, I, you can go into schools, you'll see, I was at a school yesterday in the cafeteria, they have a bulletin board, and they are celebrated, their third graders had 90% of their students, it must have been the week before winter break, who met their goals for their iReady. So it's, the students know, you'll hear students say, I, I met my 30 minutes of goals. So that, that was step number one, because that is just engaging the students into the work in their MyPath. The next level really is around the role of the teacher, because it is not the program that's going to help accelerate our students' learning, it's in conjunction with the high quality instruction. So what we're seeing now is how we, what we are learning as a result of this for every student, and how teachers are pulling students now into small groups. So they'll notice as they become more sophisticated and familiar with the program, where students are performing academically, there are so many resources that we're still learning in iReady. But often, there are many lessons that a teacher can pull and teach directly to that skill that a student needs to write then and there. And it could be a student who has a learning gap, so maybe a skill that is a previous grade level standard, but it could also be an accelerated skill. We do have students who are working beyond grade level at times. And so it's a great opportunity to help continue those students who are advanced, sometimes beyond the grade level standard. I was in a, a team meeting at a school last month, and that was the conversation. The teacher had noticed, oh my goodness, a student is working on a math skill we haven't taught yet, but in their MyPath, they're doing well, so the teacher accommodated that student as well. For lessons learned, I think, again, 30 minutes doesn't always mean 30 minutes. It, by the time we get students into their MyPath, depending on what they're working on, some of our advanced students might have a reading passage that is quite long. So as they're reading that passage, and they're not moving the mouse on the computer or whatnot, it doesn't necessarily count the time for minutes. So, and the, in the mi- the minutes is a goal, but it's not all really the purpose. The purpose is the learning, but we did learn some of those lessons. And again, for our, our younger students, you know, entering kindergarten, assessing them immediately, and then, I mean, their five-year-olds are pretty sophisticated on devices, but engaging them into their tasks, but they're, they're up and running now. And it's pretty impressive, in fact. So again, we're still learning a lot about the resources that are offered through iReady, the reports, how teachers can intervene and pull those students based on the skills that they need and they're ready for at that time. It's pretty exciting. And that, again, is our pathway forward. We have multiple opportunities, as Dr. aired shared, in the near future. Uh, January 30th, we're pulling our principals, and we're going to go over that second diagnostic, and it, it's truly, everyone is very excited to see those results, and then planning forward for that. So we've had professional learning built in for all levels, district levels, principals, and our teachers, so that we are learning together to best utilize this resource for our students. And it's, it's been very exciting, lots of learning ahead, and exciting to see where our students are going to grow. And I'm excited to share Katie, who is joining us from Anderson Elementary, is a learning facilitator. So she's working directly at a site level, supporting all the teachers in her building. And so she's going to share her experience.
Okay, thank you. I'm President Smith, interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil and Trustees. The implementation at Anderson Elementary has been fairly easy for us. Our students do have one-to-one technology devices, which makes it a lot more convenient for our students to get on their MyPath. In addition, we really stressed the importance of student usage to our teachers, and they've done a really great job of incorporating that into their daily schedule and routine. Some of the ways that we've used the information from iReady is teachers, mainly teachers can go into iReady, they can pull lessons to complement the district adopted curriculum. If they're noticing gaps in student learning, they can extract lessons from the students' MyPath, and then reteach, reinforce, or enrich students' concepts that complement the district curriculum. The other way that we use the MyPath is in our PLCs and our MTSS meetings to track student progress, which has been a really valuable tool. We have learned many lessons. So mainly, we underestimated the time that it would take students to do the diagnostic test. We jumped in, we were really excited, not recognizing that students might need support in stamina, taking that diagnostic test. We think that lack of stamina led to students recei- uh, led students to receive lessons that were far below their capabilities, which led to low student engagement. So once teachers recognized that students weren't engaged, they became really creative in getting students excited. They have graphs and targets, really to get students involved in their own learning and take ownership in that. The other thing that we acknowledge is that this is not a replacement for our curriculum, this is a tool, and that teachers still need to be collecting their own student data to fully inform their instruction. Moving forward, we're really excited to start goal setting with our students. We think that that will encourage students to take the diagnostic test seriously, so that they are receiving lessons that are at their level. We're also excited to embark in the progress monitoring piece that iReady has to offer. We're hoping to use the information to track students' academic performance, and how they're responding to instruction, and then leverage that data to really target student need. So far, at Anderson, it's been a positive experience. We know that there's still so much to learn, and I think teachers are really excited to embark on this next journey.
So we just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and give you a mid-year update. Excited about the results as they're coming in, and hopefully, we can come back and visit with you about those results later on. But we'll open it up to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would definitely like you to come back. So one of the benefits is I set the agenda, so I can tell you conclusively, you'll definitely be back, because it's not just enough to see where we started, we want to see where we're going. And I have two children that are in the K8 spectrum. I really like iReady, and they like it too. Again, I don't want to get the emails, I know not all children maybe like it, but it's adaptive. So what, I'm just going to preview, I would really love when you come back to maybe show what that experience is like. I've had the benefit of being in classrooms and watching this happen, and, I mean, teachers do this a lot of different ways, but I'll see them pulling kids out for small groups while the rest of the class is doing their iReady time, so that way, there's still individualized instruction, and then the rest of the kids are doing their iReady, and it's also adaptive. So not all kids are getting all the same questions, and that's really important to see, and it's one of the reasons why my kids actually like it. And the reports that go home to parents, because that's really where it is, we talk about parents need to be involved in their kid's education. Well, both of my children came home this fall with reports that shows how they're doing, and it's not just by grade, you know, we're used to seeing grade, math, X, Y, or Z, or S, or whatever. This breaks all of those components down, and it shows you where your child is on these different areas. And here's where it's really important. So let's say in five of these six areas, you might have a student that's doing great. They've either tested out of it, or they're right where they are on grade level, but the sixth one, maybe they need some work. Well, what I thought was really fascinating about that is that that student may have not have been identified as needing additional supports, because they're strong in the five of the six. And I was able to see where there was this one area, and then my child's student was also able to see that one area, and you can still provide those supports. So it's very individualized, and I thought it was great. And I would really like to see when you come back, an anonymized report, so that we can also see what family members are actually getting. But it's a great tool, it's a fantastic starting point for parents who maybe not know how to start a conversation with their children's teachers about what their kids are learning in addition to following along an infinite campus. And I think when we can really equip our parents with more tools for them to understand, let alone visual tools, so that they can be a part of their child's learning, it's incredibly powerful. And so I know it's a new tool, we're always learning things, but I'm very interested to see where it goes, and, and that's not just me as the Board President, that's me as a WCSD parent. And I see lots of lights on. I will start with Trustee Nicolette and move my way around.
Thank you. Concur, and, and every time I visit a school, and we talk about iReady every time, we always talk about the family component, and I know we're still working on that. We're trying to figure out what this means, this information means, and what it means for families in supporting their students. So I, I agree, I, I look forward to hearing more of that. I do just want to share a fun story. Yesterday, I quickly visited AACT to say hi to Chef Wright and congratulate him on, on the reaccreditation of the Culinary Arts Program. And I walked through what typically is the ca- the lunchroom, the, I would call it the restaurant room, where the students serve when you go and have, have your lunches, which they're going to start again next week. And this room is, there's two people in it. One of them is Dr. Erd, and I don't know who the other one was, but this room was filled with papers that they were culling through and collating and putting them into, as high as I am higher, stacks of boxes, so that they can deliver them to schools. Oh my goodness, what, what a silent champion you both were in doing that. And you had your little rubber finger on, so you could go through, go through the papers. It was really cool. I do want to say this, that, and I know other schools are doing this, but this is the story of Rita Cannon that I recently visited. He has a room at Rita Cannon that is all iReady room. You've, you, if you can, please visit this room, and I know it's not the only school, because we have fabulous principals figuring out how to put this all together and make sense of it, and what the next steps are. He has a room that's all iReady, and it's a large room, and they have all the boards filled with these color coatings that you had, and of course, I have to be very careful here, no student names. Every student has their coating for every grade level. It's just absolute, kind of like, I think, NAS, a space program must do when they're trying to figure out how to get something in space. It was absolutely marvelous, and it told such a great story. And I told the principal that I can hardly wait to come back after we have the new data, so that they can, I can see all the changes that have happened. It was, it was really marvelous. It was actually a work of art, I would think. And then, again, as far as the growth expectations, I do have just a quick question, and I, I know we're just still working all of this out, and, and I think we're doing a very good job. The, the last page, the 2023-24 iReady expectations for Washoe County School District, do we have discrete numbers that targets we're trying to reach? And then my second question is something I learned in all my visits. Not every school has the same level of device access. And, and what are we doing to work on that? Thank you.
So, Board Trustees, we are setting goals for usage first, like we talked about, and then minutes. Obviously, we want 100%, but we know that students are absent, things of that nature. If we could hit a 95%, 90 to 95% on a weekly basis, that would be fabulous, because also students might be missing minutes, because as you heard, teachers poll students when they get a yellow triangle or a red stop sign. It means that it's an indicator to the teacher that this student is struggling with this concept, and as they talked about, pull that student aside, you can pull this lesson, go over that lesson with them, so that they can take down those barriers, that learning gap for them. So they might not be getting their minutes, because they're with the teacher one-on-one or small group during those times. So 100% is, it's, it's something that would be fabulous, but really more realistically, something 90 to 95% seen on a weekly basis. And like you saw, we're, we're at 80%, and again, a full week, of, not a four-day week, but a full five-day week, so.
And then the devices.
The devices. I might let Troy, there he is, talk about that one.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Nicolette. I feel like we've done a tremendous job in supporting our principals that lack devices. One of the things all Associate Chiefs have done is supported their principals by looking at their master schedules and trying to utilize the devices that they do have, and making a schedule that makes sense, because this isn't as simple as just put the device in front of the kid. We always want a teacher to be monitoring the iReady MyPath. And then I also want to give a shout out to Dr. Turner. Anytime he hears about device situations, he is out in the site, problem solving with principals. He has, I don't have the specific dollar amounts and device amounts, but he has went after more devices to get out to our schools, and he has led the charge in making sure that we are making progress towards ideally, all schools having a ratio of one-to-one. We're not there yet, but we are, we are working towards that, and want to thank him for his leadership there.
Good, yeah, thank you for your comments. Great, great questions. Thank you for, for being here. My que- can you just give some clarity on, and, and forgive me, this is a lot of information, but I'm looking for the definition of diagnostic, is that, I think of that as, you know, troubleshooting, but is that essentially the, the test that, that they take after they spend a defined amount of, of, of daily minutes?
Okay, so the diagnostic, this school district has always utilized MAP in the past, and we had a MAP assessment on, in fall, winter, and spring. Diagnostic would be similar to that, so it is an assessment that students take first. So they took the assessment, our assessment window was the first week after school started, and then until the middle of September, so all of our students could get on, take the assessment. So the diagnostic is an assessment. I haven't done the research, but it diagnoses exactly, as Doc, President Smith was talking about, exactly what areas in literature, or what areas in reading, students are needing support, time and support, what areas they're accelerating. So within the ELA block, the diagnostic pulls it, pulls that information together in diagnosis, diagnosis, is it a phonological awareness issue? Is it a phonics issue? How are they doing with high-frequency words? How are they doing with literature? How are they doing with nonfiction text? Likewise, in math, breaks it down into five different mathematical areas, algebraic thinking, measurement, and statistics, geometry, and numbers and operations. I got them all. So it's diagnostic that it breaks that information down, so the teachers can utilize that information to move the learning forward in the classroom.
All right, fascinating, and I'm going to confess, I'm having a hard time digesting it all, it's so much data, so maybe I need some kind of iReady program to do this. So let me, let me read back what I kind of heard. So let me, let me read back what I kind of heard, and then you can grade me on that. We've done, basically, it's, it's a new program. Obviously, we expect glitches, nothing insurmountable. And we've only basically done one assessment, so it's way too early to be drawing any conclusions. This will basically reflect, hopefully, on our SBACK scores, probably more than anything else, kind of what I think I'm hearing. So tell me if I'm wrong on that. And the first one, we've seen some improvement in some areas, some non-improvement in some, but again, it's way too early. But that's kind of between math and reading, kind of what I'm seeing. We have, unfortunately, a majority that are not up to proficient, as does every school district that I'm aware of in the state. And I look at that stuff. So, in defense of us, we're no different than, than the others. Some of them are much worse than us. So we wake up in the morning, and I thank, I say, my, for, thank you for those other school districts that, that make us, uh, look good. But that's kind of why we brought it in, so we're going to do much better, hopefully. So that's my read back. And then, um, I guess questions would be, how often are the parents updated? Is it, is it kind of like Infinite Campus where they can go on? And then, when do, when is the next? I think I saw it as Feb- February 1, but I'm not positive in there. So that's my read back, grade me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I haven't graded for a long time, so, so I would say everything was on point. Yes, we purchased the tool so that we can improve our instruction, improve our student achievement. It is like a third arm in the classroom. So teachers, while students are on the program, the teachers can be pulling students for individualized instruction to fill gaps, or like we heard also, extending students who need extensions. And it gives us that information. It provides that information by grade level. So a student might be enrolled in fourth grade, but they might be, um, achieving at a sixth-grade level in math, numbers, and operations. So it will show that that student needs acceleration. It might show that that student needs, uh, might be performing at a second-grade level in literature. And so they need time and support in literature. So that's how it's designed and how it will help our teachers with their instruction of, of, um, their tier-one instruction and moving those students forward to achieve those gains in our summative assessment. Like anything, it does take time. So, um, we want to see great gains this year. But again, this is a new tool. We are putting it in place, we are implementing, we're, we are working through all of the barriers or the snags that come about. So in the long run, yes, we expect that this will help with our summative results and student achievement on that.
I guess I did okay there. So what are the, like, the dates that we're going to, how often are the assessments done that we're going to see results?
So there are three diagnostic assessments. We took one, one was the window, um, right when school started. One of them started today. So the second window started today. Like I said, I had, I peeked and I saw about a hundred students were on already. We will have those results, and the window closes, um, February 1st. So we will have those results in March. And that is when, the end of January is when our partners will come in and work with the principals. After the results are in, we will have our partners come in and work with central office, as well as our teachers on February 26th. So they will have the results of the second diagnostic. They'll sh- see the growth. And our partners from Curriculum Associates will guide them, teachers and central office, how to read those results, what it means, how to communicate to the, uh, community, and explain the results, um, as we go through.
Will be the next one after that?
Will be in May, after Smarter Balance. So Smarter Balance will end before the window opens for the third diagnostic.
So that raises, when do we get SBACK? When does the district get it? I know it takes a little time to get to us.
Uh, we'll administer SBACK, uh, Smarter Balance in, um, March through May. And then, after that, we will administer this assessment.
And this, I think, if you said it, I missed it. Do the parents, like, um, get updated on a regular basis?
Yes, so last semester, um, we worked with Parent School Partnerships. Again, they, we've worked with them very closely to make sure parents are, um, updated on their students' work. We provided, um, a package for teachers for parent-teacher conferences in elementary that included navigating, um, the reports from the iReady assessment. In February, we will be sending material home or student results home to parents from middle school as well.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, ladies, for your hard, hard labor. I mean, but this, this was needed so badly, and I am so grateful that we have this for, for our teachers and our students. I'm just sitting here listening, and this is, this is really what I kind of got out of the first presentation when we voted on it. And I was just picturing a regular classroom with our wonderful teachers that work so hard and don't have enough time. Twenty-five, twenty-six students, just an array of differences, levels, um, where they are with all of these concepts. Since we don't have a lot of time, to me, this is a time saver. You're taking time out to do this, but kids aren't always forefront with, if they're struggling with something. And correct me if I'm wrong, and I, I think I'm right here, because I've watched kids in the classroom doing this. They're, they're struggling with the concept. It's not that they can just, you know, kind of like fade, fade into the background. They can't advance. So they're going to get that concept, and that teacher knows that they need more help on that concept. So this is a huge time saver. We're not wasting time teaching kids that can advance on the same thing that they already have, and kids that don't have it aren't going to fall through the cracks.
Right, and I, I'll, I'll throw it down to you all, too. One of the pieces that, um, is most useful as a tool for teachers is when the students are on the MyPath and they struggle, they will get an indicator that the teacher can see on a report that says Sandy is struggling with, um, this concept. And there is a, a link to a lesson that they can use to go over that concept and go over that, review that with the student, so the student can get past that and move forward.
Well, thank you all very much, and, and I have never publicly thanked, um, Dr. Eard, but she was a huge help to me. I was a, as I was an interim principal printing out SBACK tickets, so I had her direct line. But going forward, I really think it's important that there is a feedback loop for our teachers and our administrators, because they're really on the ground doing the implementation. And this is a large-scale programmatic implementation for our district. And you all, and our teachers, and our principals, and our IT department all need to be complimented on the rollout and the implementation. Because whenever we do a large-scale implementation like this, there are always going to be bugs and hiccups, and that's okay. But sometimes we need to slow down to go fast. And so I think having that feedback loop for our teachers and principals is really going to be important. And then also, just to caution the board, when you all go forward and you start looking at data on a year-to-year basis, this is going to be your baseline year for implementation. And so to always keep that tickle in the back of your mind, that this is the baseline of implement- of implementation. So, but thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful job, thank you so much. So that was a fantastic and robust conversation. Um, I am going to go ahead and break us now. Um, we'll be taking a twenty-minute break and reconvening at 5:00 PM. And then we will go ahead and, um, do a quick review through item 5.05, and then get into our two items for possible action. Thank you.
All right, it's 5:08 PM and I'm going to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washto County School District Board of Trustees. We are going to go ahead now and open item 5.05. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. It's the presentation and discussion of the status of implementation and utilization of the district-wide installment of Syntegix Crisis Alert wearable mobile system. We welcome our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Circey, our Emergency Manager, Roy Anderson, and Principal of the George L. Dilworth Middle School, Joel Pashoto. So, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Adam Circey for the record. This is just an informational item to give everyone an update on the progress. Just to rewind the clock, really, it was summer 2023 that we began installing all of these devices and systems across the district in earnest. This is a sample I brought in addition to the actual lanyard. These are the strobe sensors and devices that many of you have seen and will begin seeing across the district in virtually every space, every classroom, every hallway, including this boardroom. If you can see that light dot just to your right of the clock back there is an anchor that has recently been pre-installed that will ultimately, in the next several weeks, have one of these located on it. And you'll see more about this later. I just wanted to bring it. So, we successfully installed about 45, 50 sites over the summer and initiated training at all of those sites to those school staff as the school year began in August. We then continued across the district, about another 45, 50 sites were completed and trained in December prior to winter break. We've got about 15 or 20 sites, and these are administrative sites as well, so it's more total than just our schools that are being installed as we speak. And those sites, those site administrators will be trained in February. So, very shortly, this is related to training. I wanted to segue over to my colleague, Roy Anderson, who's been managing and leading most of this training in conjunction with our vendor, Syntegix. And of course, also having all of these sites trained and actually utilizing the system has now allowed us to accumulate some actual data from these sites. So, Roy?
Thank you, Adam. Trustee President Smith, the trustees, Superintendent McNeil, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this. So, when we're looking at the training, the initial usage that we're looking, if you have the data here in front of you, is from the first 40 or so schools that were trained at the beginning of the school year. The schools that were trained in December, most of them utilized yesterday's Staff Development Day to train their staff. So, yesterday was kind of a fun day. I was getting alerts on my phone from all over the place as we tested and have fun with it. And I had the opportunity to go to Duncan Elementary and then Incline High School. Luckily, I got there yesterday to be able to train their staff. So, it's been fun. One of the things that we want to, I do want to remind people of when they're looking at the numbers here is that these are incidents or activations that were closed for these reasons. So, let's say, you know, 280 behaviors. That doesn't necessarily mean those are 280 different incidents. So, for example, it could be a fight that was seen by three people. All three pressed a button and it is activated for that. So, we do have some real-life incidents where we had a staff member fall, trip and fall. The staff member themselves utilized the system but also was witnessed by two other people. Bam, that's three medical, you know, incidents, if you will, as far as this data is concerned. So, there's no way to, you know, parse out, you know, individualized data, so as far as incidents are concerned. But it is a very useful tool, and I know Joel addressed that here in a little bit, as principals are able to get into their own numbers and see how things are working for them at their school. One thing I do want to point out that we're excited about, that was unknown to us over the summer as we were starting to implement the system, was that it actually, you know, it was brought in as a staff alert that, you know, for the staff members to alert their principals or administration that, you know, they need help for whatever reason, and then also to implement a code red lockdown at, you know, building wide. But as we started getting into the system, we found out that it actually has the ability to activate through the principal's cellphone and then also through the computer app, a code yellow, secure campus. It could do, we use orange down for the light that strobes for evacuation, which is really nice because now we can start training our staff that not only may we evacuate for a fire, but, you know, I kind of use a teacher lingo, if you will, of all fires are evacuations, but not all evacuations are due to fire. So, it allows us to utilize the system for more than just code red and then, you know, the staff alert. So, that's been a really nice surprise. And then on top of that, we were able to actually program the system to do drills. So, utilizing the system for a drill now will allow our staff and students to see the lights flash, the computer message take over on their screens, and then allow, and the intercom announcement. So, that way, it gets us used to like, hey, the first time that we see this, it isn't a real incident. So, that's made it really nice. I know the principals have liked that feature, and it gives us the ability to utilize it as more than just a, well, it's great to have just in case, but it's actually a tool that we can utilize. One last point before I think we turn it over to the video is that we also really want to make sure that we stress that this is just another tool or another layer that we're using for the safety of our staff and students. It doesn't replace communication because right now, if you push the button, you know, Joel gets the alert, he doesn't know why, right? So, we still have to make sure that we have that follow-up communication, if at all possible. If not, we need to make sure that we're sending not only the administration but also like our medical emergency team until we can find out, you know, what is the reason why or, you know, for the alert. But apparently, it's time for the video. Thank you, JJ, for cutting me short. Everyone here thanks you. Yeah, so apparently, I'm done now. We'll watch the video.
It's an independent system that doesn't rely on Wi-Fi, that doesn't rely on cellphone service, and it really only does one thing. It does it, and it does it well.
So, if I wanted to alert the staff to a medical emergency or maybe a physical altercation, I would press this button three times. It's a pretty forceful push. You're not going to push on accident. So, it shows that Ashley Shilwich opened staff alert. And then on the phone, we're able to see that the staff alert was opened up in the career center where we're at right now.
I would say the one thing that I have heard, teachers do feel as though we are looking out for their best interests, and the district has done something here that is beneficial for them.
Personally, I feel safer now that I have this badge, the button, because it lets me know that instead of making a phone call to help with a situation, which could take minutes to get ahold of somebody, I could press a button and we can have somebody there in seconds.
We have a lot of kids with seizures, and I swear that is one of the places that it has really made a difference. A teacher can just push the button, and we're there in less than a minute. And some of those kids, they need their medication really quickly.
So, the other application of the badges is a immediate lockdown or a code red lockdown of the building. So, that's when there's a more immediate threat to life and to the building itself, and it's a quick way for the staff to alert the entire building that there is an emergency that we need to take protective action from.
Overall, our staff has really embraced the system, and it helps them to really feel more confident that they can do their job.
This is a drill. This is an emergency announcement. Code yellow, secure campus. Code yellow, secure campus. Follow all code yellow, secure campus procedure.
And all teacher laptops and computers are taken over with this screen so that they know exactly what to do.
Yeah, I feel safe. I feel that it's like if I ever need it, it's easy.
If anything, I think it's just made us more intentional about our safety. It's allowed us an opportunity to kind of rethink some of our procedures.
There's a quicker response time of knowing right away, it goes off on my phone, it goes off on my watch, I can see that exact location.
So, there's an overall feeling of safety that's built into our school now because the system is in place, which opens them up to be able to do their jobs, which is educating our students, building those relationships.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to speak a little bit about the Syntegix program. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points from that fabulous video. Shout out to Jeff Foss from Communications. He was able to capture really good elements in that and some statements from staff to show how that's really used. Just to reiterate, one of the most important things that we've heard from staff who have these badges, and it's everybody, we're talking about from the night custodians to be able to lock anything down and alert police to assistance in a classroom or teachers or anybody in the office. The biggest thing that we've heard so far is that element of safety, that reassurance, just knowing that they can contact anybody in a given moment or shut down the school if necessary. We also have been using them as drills, working with Roy Anderson really closely. It's been a really refreshing way to conduct a drill without feeling a sense of huge alarm with loud blaring sounds. Certainly, our strategies, autism programs have been really appreciative of that, too. It's a lot softer. There's, the strobes indicate the color or the kind of drill that we're conducting. So, it might be a code red drill that we're conducting, it will flash red. So, it's really intuitive, and I don't know, it's just been really good and a refreshing way to feel safe again at school, especially in pretty uncertain times that we've heard from some teachers. So, it's been really welcome. So, thank you. We welcome any sort of questions that you might have about our experiences or implementation.
This is really exciting. I love that the focus, when I first thought of Syntegix and, you know, we welcome the product, my first thought was safety, you know, violence incidents. And now, we're learning that this is medical emergencies, this is personal emergencies that a staff member may be having. And in all of those situations, it takes a response that could be in the minutes and it brings it down to the seconds. And that's so incredibly powerful. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very happy to see this, especially in light of, we have other improvements that Mr. Circe is working on throughout all the schools, physical, you know, this is very helpful from now until we get these actual physical, you know, first single entry, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you very much. For clarification for everyone, because for me, elopement means one thing. Can you just tell us what that means?
Exactly. Yeah, elopement, so yeah, basically, it's just a kid leaves the classroom, you know, and the interesting thing about this one and is that the elopement way some of the schools have been able to utilize this was to notice that a pattern, that it was one particular student approximately the same time period mostly every day. So, they were able to recognize that, put in some, or implement some help and support for the student, and they've cut the elopement from that particular student down to, you know, once every other week or so, and really has helped, you know, get that student to stay in classroom. So, basically, when we're looking at elopement, it is the leaving of the classroom. And then, the reason that number can be so high is schools will also, as you're following a student, will re-push it to help indicate or track like, hey, now we've moved to this location, now we've moved to this location, which is really cool, but it drives your numbers up to, you know, like, oh, my gosh, you know, I let you 3070 elopements, you know. So, that's why I really want to stress that the data, it doesn't mean individual incidents.
I came in late, but how many actual classroom emergencies have we had, like, over what period?
It's actually really difficult to discern from this particular data set. We would have to pull that from another, you know, either Infinity Campus or somewhere else that that data is being housed. So, unfortunately, I do not have that data.
Would it be dozens, a handful?
Yeah, fortunately or unfortunately, that is more of a school discipline side of things and not necessarily rising to the level of emergency management.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you so much. I'm so, this is the meeting of being grateful for me because I am so grateful, we can't do enough to protect our children, our teachers, our administrators, all of the workers that are in those schools, our community, and we have a responsibility to protect them. And really, I mean, I don't think it matters how many times it's pushed. It's pushed because there's an emergency, but the response time can leave it at just an emergency and not have it evolve into a catastrophe. So, I'm really, really appreciative. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all the work that went into installing this. This is not a minor thing. When we think, we've got this great idea, and it's going to go everywhere. I know immediately our operations and our facilities team and our safety team and everyone's like, and now begins the work, because we're a huge district and there's been a lot of work. And I know that the community has been interested in knowing how the rollout is going. Now, we've answered those questions, and it sounds like very soon, we'll have full implementation everywhere. I have heard great things about it. I've seen them, I've been with principals while it's been activated, and it's been a really neat tool. A lot of the principals have actually said that they are utilizing it in ways that they didn't anticipate originally before, and that's great. It just goes to show the versatility of it and the fact that this is serving them in unexpected ways. Trustee Church.
So, again, in the handout, 58 physical altercations doesn't mean 58, it might be 12 that were multiple people hit buttons.
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, if you think of like a cafeteria, you could have five, six, seven staff members there, three of them, four of them pushed a button. The nice thing about it, too, though, is that gives you that, not only the location, the time, but then also from an administration's side, you'll know who pushed a button so that you could go back to them and say, hey, what did you see? What happened? So, it can help with some of the investigation of an incident as well. I do know of a school that they were noticing, again, a pattern of maybe some incidents occurring in a location, so they were able to adjust their supervision of that location at that time to help as well. So, again, we're very early in using this, you know, we're talking to 40 schools now. So, luckily, we have the ability to learn and adapt and put it in, and, you know, I see adding it to our drills and how we're doing it with the emergency plans and things like that has been really beneficial.
I could just see that getting falsely reported.
That is correct, and that's why I really want to make sure, you know, in our forum here and that if we look at the data, that it doesn't necessarily mean separate incidents. And as I was looking at this, I do apologize, I, next time, because I'm sure there'll be a next time, I'll make sure to put a footnote in here that the date, you know, of what that represents, and I did not add that to here.
Thank you, President. Again, thank you guys for your work. I do have one question. So, like, say a facility, just say, Smearage Elementary, someone, some staff member pushes the button several times, does that go out to all staff members, so everyone's on the same page and knows what's going on?
No, that's actually a very good question. So, at the building level, there are building administrators, so they're the ones that have the ability to see the reports, add badges, you know, assign the badges out. But then, there's also responders. So, there's a certain number of responders at each site, those are the ones that will get the alert. So, we're looking at the medical emergency team, we're looking at the office staff, we're looking at the principals, and it depends on the school level, right, whether they have deans or learning facilitators. So, those are the ones that receive the staff alert, which is the localized, basically, we kind of made it real simple for staff to understand, three-button push or I need help, right? So, I need help, that's a localized, those are the only ones that get it. Now, if we talk about the full building district, our building-wide alert, then school police dispatch gets the alert, I get the alert, all of our sergeants who are working on getting all of our police officers get those alerts, and then that's the building-wide alert.
So, I guess what I'm hearing is, I'm not big on hypotheticals, my wife hates them, but, so if there's altercation in the middle of a hallway involving fifth graders, kindergarten teachers take their class out to the playground, they don't know necessarily to avoid that area?
That is correct. The ability for those types of incidents still lie in the principal or the school administration or that response team. They can then go quickly into the app and actually put the building to a yellow if they need to. So, in that scenario, and again, it's one of those, you don't know what you're getting on the first initial button push, right? It's like, okay, what, right? And now, you investigate it. We do try to send as many people as possible because we don't want the delay in a medical, you mentioned the seizure in the video. Nothing worse than sending a principal down there to find out what it is, and now we're calling the medical team. So, we're really trying to emphasize training that we try to investigate as quickly as possible.
So, a principal or someone could push out information to the entire?
Absolutely. Okay. Yeah, absolutely, from their app, from that location or, you know, via radio to the office that can do it as well. So, we really try to make sure that we put some redundancy in there so we don't accidentally do something, which, you know, unfortunately, that could happen with the button push. But we really want to make sure that we focus on the quickness of the alert, gather information, and then that's why we want to make sure we stress that, look, you know, code yellow, secure campus is a tool, not necessarily for certain incidents, but for overall safety for the principals or the schools.
Well, thank you so much. I think that that answers all of our questions, and we appreciate the time. Thank you. All right, so that closes item 5.05 and brings us to item 5.06. This is the discussion and possible action to recognize the voluntary withdrawal of the Association of Professional and Technical Administrators, APTA, as the bargaining representative for, the bargaining representation for professional, technical, pro-tech employees, and to recognize the Washoe Professional Technical Association, WPTA, as the exclusive bargaining representative for pro-tech employees in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for possible action. In front of us, we have Kevin Pick, Washoe County School District's Employment Attorney, and also Adriana Publico, our APTA Vice President and potential future WPTA Vice President. So, we welcome you, Mr. Pick and Ms. Publico.
Thank you, President Smith, interim Superintendent McNeil, and honorable trustees for the opportunity. For the record, I'm Adriana Publico. I'm a project manager in the school district. I'm also the Vice President of APTA. I'm also the Vice President of APTA, the Association of Professional and Technical Administrators, which is the association or union that represents our school psychologists and our professional technical employees, commonly referred to as pro-techs. I'm one of four pro-techs on the APTA board. And with any group of employees, you have competing priorities. That's not new. That's existed as long as associations have existed. In recent months, the tensions between the two groups of employees have escalated to the point that, um, we knew that there were some employees, some pro-techs who wanted to split from APTA, and that's been going on for a while. We didn't know whether they represented a minority or a majority of the group, and so we put a vote out to the affected employees. That's the entire bargaining unit, whether they're dues-paying members of the association or not. Um, and the results of the vote were overwhelmingly the, for the support of pro-techs, pro-techs forming our own union and being represented. Um, there is guidance in statute, so in NRS, it says what we would need to do in order to request this recognition from you, the Board of Trustees. There are specific documents that we had to prepare and decisions that we had to make. If recognized, we will meet with our members, potentially amend our bylaws and have elections for our board later on in the spring for next year, but there are some things that we needed to decide quickly in order to get on this agenda. So, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I welcome any questions you have.
All right, seeing no lights. JJ, do we have any public comment for this item?
Jennifer Jimenez.
Hi, Ms., hi, welcome, Ms. Jimenez.
I'm a little short. President Smith, interim superintendent McNeil and distinguished board, thank you so much for letting me speak. I urge each of you to vote yes to recognize the Washoe Professional Technical Association. As I am a 24-year employee with the school district, I love this school district. It's my heart, and no matter, no matter whatever position I've been in, I've always done it to the very best to my ability. And this, I see, will give us an opportunity for two different groups, both very valued members, but two different groups with two different, unique job descriptions, salary schedules. It'll give both the opportunity to excel in getting our negotiations ratified and for our members to have a happy, ongoing life, so we're not in this limbo. So, this would be of such value to the employees that were under APTA, um, that now want to go to the WTPA. So, I just wanted to say it will benefit each group, it will, uh, aptus negotiate and focus on our unique needs, and just please understand, um, and when you're making this decision, that it's about a group of employees that love their jobs, that love everything about this district, and we want to keep going, and we feel like this would be something that we need to get through quickly so that we can better ourselves and we can better the district. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The board received emails from Chaz Lidnicki, Melissa Gillis, Amber Hilberg, Norma Velasquez-Bryant, Dr. Shannon Cologne, Scott Weevly, Charlie Hoppy, Thomas Wisdom, Mike Petrie, Jeremy Harrison, and Joe Medulla related to this item.
All right, um, seeing no lights or seeing lights, we can, oh, do we have a no worries at all? Don't be sorry.
Lisa McNeil.
Hi, Ms. McNeil, welcome.
Good evening, uh, President Smith, welcome back, interim superintendent McNeil. Uh, esteemed board members, thank you for hearing us today. Um, I have been involved with APTA since 2017. I've been on the board previously as treasurer, and I'm currently the pro-tech representative. And what I want to say tonight is that our goal here, as much as this has been a divisive process, our, our goal here really is to free both sides, both groups, so that they can negotiate in their own best interest. Um, we have frequently found over the years that we are limited in what we can bring to the bargaining table. And so, um, we not only are on separate salary schedules, but there are various clauses in our contract that were negotiated to serve the interests of one side or another. And, um, this year, it's, it feels like we are in the position of kind of bargaining against each other, um, which is really unfortunate. Um, we really don't hold any ill will towards our psychologist colleagues. We have great respect for what they do, um, but we want to be free to get back to the bargaining table and to allow the psychologists to follow the pathway that is more beneficial to them. So, we thank you for your, uh, consideration, and we hope we'll get your support tonight.
Thank you so much. All right, I'll bring it back to this body for questions or a motion.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, President, ready to make a motion. Okay, uh, the Board of Trustees moves to recognize that a majority of employees and the executive board in the Association of Professional and Technical Administrators Bargaining Unit voted to voluntarily withdraw APTA as the exclusive bargaining representative, and therefore, the board withdraws recognition of the Association of Professional and Technical Administrators as the bargaining representative for its employees per NAC 288.145, that the professional technical employees do not share a community of interests with the school psychologists, and that the Washoe Professional Technical Association be the exclusive bargaining representative for professional technical employees at the Washoe County School District pro-tech as per NRS 288.160.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Woodley, seconded by trustee Nicolet, just by a hair there. Uh, seeing no lights on or comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, so that closes item 5.06 and brings us now to our last item for this section of the agenda, and that is item 5.07. This is the discussion and possible action to approve the official job description for the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome Kate Shum, our interim director of the Talent and Employee Services Group. Uh, and so, we, we welcome you, Ms. Shum, and I also want to just add a couple of points here because the community has been very interested, of course, in this recruitment process. We will be having a special meeting, uh, that we anticipate for 9:00 AM on Tuesday, January 23rd. This is a precursor to that because as we even begin to look ahead for anything that this board may choose to do in terms of recruitment, it really all begins with what is this job? And so, that's why we're starting here with this, uh, first process. So, we did do a significant overhaul of this a couple of years ago, but it's always worth bringing back and making sure that we're all on the same page, especially since we do have some new colleagues. Um, and on that note, I will turn it over to Ms. Shum and hope I didn't steal too much of your intro.
You covered it all. Um, sorry, I have a sinus infection, so I'm going to do my best. Um, so, this is the same job description that we utilized in November of 2021 that this board approved. There's been no changes, um, so if you guys want to review and let me know, I'll take notes, and we can update accordingly.
Yeah, so I did have the opportunity to review this, and just as a reminder to all of the colleagues, that this was updated just a couple of years ago. When I was reviewing it this time, though, since I do look at it with a different lens, and in any of the future actions we take, we always pull in our lived experience, the one section that I, that read odd to me was under minimum qualifications. You'll see in the education and experience that it says any combination of education and experience that could likely provide the required knowledge and skills is qualifying. A typical way to obtain the knowledge and skills would be, so this was where I didn't know if maybe we wanted to be a little bit more direct because, I mean, this, of course, this board needs to weigh in, but if we have the minimum qualifications as a master's degree in educational administration, leadership management, or related field, uh, with a doctorate being preferred, that's, we wouldn't be saying like it's typical, like, can we remove that line where it says a typical way to obtain? Because if we are telling potential applicants, this is the minimum of qualifications, then someone with a bachelor's would clearly understand that they don't, they don't have the minimum. So, really, my question's around that one line, removing it, the atypical way, because otherwise, that would create a lot of gray area. And out of fairness, somebody who has a lot of experience but only a bachelor's may want to apply, and they, they could get screened out. So, I just think that as a board, we need to be more direct. If, if the minimum is the minimum, then the minimum's the minimum. Don't know if that makes any sense.
Makes total sense to me. I, I think it's something we easily can remove for that more direct.
Yeah, because, you know, we, we do have the five or more years, um, all of that looks great to me. Obviously, we have the minimum that you have to be in current possession of or within three years a valid Nevada school administrator, but that's not a recommendation or a typical. That's a, you have to have that. So, anyways, my, um, what I wanted to bring to this board for consideration, and I can make a motion to strike it, is that line where it says a typical way to obtain the knowledge and skills. I just think that that line introduces a vagueness that I find to be confusing, but I think the rest of the section is okay. Uh, trustee Church?
Now, you're, you're asking me to go back two years on my memory, but I, I think we kicked that around quite a bit last time. Now, but maybe I'm wrong, um, but so I'm going to opine out loud. There might be persons that have excellent backgrounds that don't meet that specific thing. I mean, let me give you an example, and maybe, maybe it falls in there, maybe it doesn't. You have a Navy Admiral that ran the Navy Training Command for 10 years, part of his or her career as an Admiral, and has a master's degree, a PhD, whatever. I'm not sure if that always necessarily falls in there, but I'd certainly want to at least consider them. And that's my memory of why we put that word typical in, so maybe somebody can clarify, and then I have a couple of other comments, but that's it for now.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I, and I remember that because we, we would want people like that to apply, but they would still have the master's degree in any of those, or related field, which is why we left that open-ended. So, what we're saying is you should have a master's degree in educational administration, leadership management, or a related field which is open. And then in the future, should this board choose to engage itself with an agency or firm, which will be a decision that we'll make in public at a future time, if and when that person is selected, we will then instruct that agency or firm in what it is we are looking for, and we would be able to emphasize things like untraditional paths or professions. But what this to me reads is that you would need a master's degree at the very minimum to apply for this job, but we're definitely keeping it open-ended because I fully agree with my colleague, trustee Church, that somebody with a master's in many related fields could be a fantastic candidate, but the minimum is you still need a master's.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. I too remember the discussion, and the reason we ended up with typical way was simply as, um, um, a way to provide some specific information in a very small way, because it, it's a big huge, minimum qualifications is, as you know, is a huge area. So, I'm comfortable either way. I do remember that we wanted that as to just provide some idea of what it meant.
Thank you, President Smith. I don't recall any of that because I was not here, but it sounds, sounds good to me. Um, I'll wait for my comment if there's anyone else that wants to comment on that so we're not bouncing around. No? Okay.
Yep, sounds good. I'm actually, on that note, um, so I was just confering really quick with, uh, chief legal counsel, Rombardo. It, it is going to be, I am going to make a motion, but just simply to remove that one line. I have no problem with the first line, but if we're saying something is a minimum qualification, then, then it's a minimum, so there's not a typical way to get to the minimum. I just think that that one line is confusing, particularly because we may tell an agency or a firm in the future that this is the minimum. I just think it's, it's, as we've gone through so many of our policies, we've tried to remove wording that is fuzzy or vague, and to me, this line is that. So, on that note, um, I will make a motion to remove the line, a typical way to obtain the knowledge and skills would be, colon, uh, from the superintendent of school's job description.
I second.
You got beat again, Clerk Rodriguez. All right, so motion by President Smith, seconded by trustee Westlake. Um, and by the way, we will take, um, we will take a vote at the end to adopt the entire thing. These are just interim decisions, and then there will be a vote at the end to approve or not approve the entirety of it. Um, so all those seeing no lights on except for trustee Westlake's, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that is exactly right. Thank you so much, and he just reminded us why he is here. I, I got through, shoot, so long of never doing that. How do we undo that?
What we're going to do is take the public comment, we'll take all public comments, and then you'll do your vote over.
Very good, that's exactly what we'll do, and we learned something today.
Colby Reardon.
Hi, welcome, principal and president Reardon.
Good evening, uh, for the record, or good evening, uh, superintendent McNeil, President Smith, and all of our trustees today. For the record, my name is Colby Reardon, president of Washoe School Principals Association, and I wanted to take a moment to comment on the minimum qualification stated in the job description for our new superintendent. The job description states a minimum of five years' experience as an executive-level leader with experience serving pre-K, uh, through 12 as desired. Becoming a successful school superintendent requires a diverse range of experiences that contribute to a comprehensive understanding of our educational system, leadership, and administration. Washoe County School District is a large district with diverse needs. In addition to having experience as an executive-level leader, having experiences as an administrator at a school site provides firsthand knowledge of the complexities, challenges, and dynamics within a school setting from a variety of experiences. This enables the superintendent to relate to the issues faced by teachers, students, staff, and administrators. Having direct experience as a school leader allows the superintendent the ability to make informed and effective decisions based on the fact they are more familiar with the day-to-day operations, challenges, and best practices. This aids in our making decisions that have a positive impact on our district as a whole. Progressing into administrative positions such as assistant principal, principal, or another leadership role within a school, officers offers firsthand experience in managing operations, implementing policies, dealing with disciplinary issues, and collaborating with various stakeholders. Most importantly, having experience as a school leader creates credibility among the teacher, staff, parents, and the community. It builds trust and rapport. These are essential for successful leadership and implementing changes within our district. Our Washoe County School District promise states that we know every student by name, strength, and need, so they graduate prepared for the future they choose. How can one deliver on this promise if they haven't been in the trenches to do the work for our approximate 61,000 students and 8,000 employees? In closing, I believe that by requiring experience as a leader at the school site within the superintendent's job description ensures that the individual has practical knowledge, skills, and understanding of the educational landscape necessary to effectively lead Washoe County School District and positively impact the academic success of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
So, what we're going to do is just create a little record. So, what inadvertently happened was we, we took a motion, we voted on the motion, we stopped mid-vote in order to allow public comment to occur. So, public comment has now occurred, we're going to go back and reconsider that motion, it's still on the table, and we'll vote on that motion, and then you'll move forward with the meeting. But public comment's done for this item at this point, so I don't know if you want to ask if there's anybody else that wants to give public comment just in case.
Sure. Is there anyone out there that would like to give public comment? All right, um, so does that mean that I can bring back the item and then, uh, vote again?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um, and we can certainly take action on any of those things that our commenter just said. Uh, the item at hand, uh, which was a motion made by me, seconded by trustee Westlake, was simply to remove that one sentence that I've already identified. Uh, so, seeing no discussion on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All right, that motion carries. Um, if we were to consider the items that our commenter just, um, mentioned to us, and we can, we can discuss this because this is our we can discuss this because this is our job description, we, we could add, where it says five or more years of experience as an executive-level leader, we could say executive level, executive level or administrate, administrative leader, so that we can add that administrator ability. Because there's a good point, I mean, somebody could have many years of school leadership experience but not necessarily fall into that executive level. So I personally find that very intriguing. So we could add executive level or administrative leader, and we would still keep the part in parentheses about preferring education systems. I probably wouldn't add school administrator because we're not requiring that the experience be, but if we add administrative or administrator, then we certainly open the, the door to that so that again, a future potential agency or firm would know that this was our intentionality to it. So thoughts to the group. Vice, uh, Trustee Nicolet.
Thank you.
Sorry. Old habits die hard.
Right. Thank you. I would like you to repeat that again, because for some reason, I'm a little uncomfortable with the or. I don't know if it, it meets the intent that we're seeking.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're just kind of talking this through because of course, you know, these are just comments that are coming, but potentially, it could read five or more years of experience as an executive-level leader and/or administrative leader? Because right now, it just says an executive-level leader. So we could say and/or administrative leader. Because there are many people that would not call themselves executives but would certainly say, "I'm an administrative leader."
True, and I guess I don't, and I appreciate the public comment. I, I think if we wanna meet the full intent, which I agree on, is, is that we want this person to have both executive leadership outside of the schools and executive leadership as an AP, a dean, a principal, in, working in the school site, really requiring both.
I think that's where the and/or could come in, because we don't know the breadth of applicants, and people could fall into both, or they could fall in one or the other but be exceptionally strong. So I hear you, but in that case, I would probably say the and/or is, is okay, so that no one's left behind, but we cast that net appropriately. Because even our associate chiefs aren't executive-level leaders necessarily.
Yes.
Only our chiefs are.
The and/or makes sense, and then we can have that discussion in particulars when it's time. Okay.
Bingo. Uh, Vice President Mayberry?
Well, I think my, I think Trustee Nicolet sort of resolved my, my issue. You know, I like, I like the word "school-based leader." I mean, there are other leaders other than just administrators. I think that has more of a, of a, of a wider net. But I think it also, executive level, I mean, a school-based leader isn't necessarily executive. I don't know. I'm not sure where I was going with that. Thank you.
No, it's okay. And remember when we, I remember when we talked about this a couple of years ago, and I see you, Trustee Church, I'm gonna go to you next. Because we put the parentheses around experience serving pre-K to 12 education systems, that's why I wouldn't put "school administratively leader," because they would know that they fall into that category. So it's a funny little fine line, but in the future, in a future public discussion, we will fine-tune the characteristics that we're looking for so that applicants have more of an idea. This is more of like the broad strokes, but I hear Principal and President Reardon's comment about making sure that we're not leaving behind high-level leaders that just don't happen to be executives. Trustee Church?
This, this is like deja vu all over again. I even remember this debate last time, and it was a wonderful debate, and there's no perfect answer. So I bring a lot of years of experience in having seen this at other government agencies. Let me just give you an example. Governor Sandoval says, you know, "I really feel a calling for K-12." Well, you didn't work in, you know, he's, he's now the head of UNR. I forget his title, but you know, he's-
President.
-president of UNR. And former governor, former attorney general, former judge. I mean, I want him to apply, if you're listening. And, you know, again, I get back to, say, the Navy Admiral, the Army General, of course, the Air Force General that ran Air Training Command, that doesn't have experience in K-12. And then I, I think of another hypothetical of a principal that turned his or her school around, did an incredible job, but the superintendent just refused to die and go away, so they never got promoted up the chain. And then maybe one day, the superintendent retired, and they were there for a year. And now, so they, and they turned the school around, and you know, I mean, I just wanna cast a wide net. And I think that's what we agreed on last time. But, which gets back to that experience serving pre-K, is that mandatory, or is that IE? Should we add IE?
No, so that is just desired. So it means that we have an interest in that, but that's not a minimum. And I wouldn't recommend, personally, I don't recommend changing that. I think just having it just the way that it is makes sense.
Where does it say "desired"?
After the word "education systems." Um, right underneath, it's the, it's the sentence right underneath where it says "experience."
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And that protects exactly the scenario that you just outlined.
Okay. So those are my points, that casting the wide net, not limiting it to K-12, and you just don't know. I mean, if a principal wants to apply, and maybe they're, again, maybe under Barry, General Barry in the Guard, his side job or whatever before. I mean, you, you know, you, you just wanna cast a wide net for good people that have a diversity of, whether they're representative diversity background themselves, whether they're educators, whether they're big members in the community, just et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, I think I would wanna look at a county manager, which I think is acceptable in here, but if somebody was a county manager, city manager, et cetera. So yeah, whatever we can do, just, I wanna keep it wide.
Very good. I, there might be a motion cooking after I hear from Trustee Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. I think it's, it's gonna be a really rare animal that has the executive and the school administrator. That's gonna be-
It'll be and/or.
Okay, that, I just wanna make sure.
Read you.
I just wanna weigh in. I, I have to say, I agree with Principal Reardon wholeheartedly. I mean, people that have given their life to students, I, I think it's, I think it's important that, that we do that and include it, because that really, they, they've devoted their life to it.
All right. On that note, I'll make a motion that the Washoe County School District job description for superintendent of schools under "experience" now read "five or more years of experience as an executive-level leader and/or administrative leader." Clerk Rodriguez got that one. All right, so motion by me, President Smith, seconded by Clerk Rodriguez. I will say that again, that the "experience" line now read "five or more years of experience as an executive-level and/or administrative leader."
Clarification?
Mm-hmm.
This is not our final motion. We have more. Okay.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Let's keep on going. I'll, I'll go to Trustee Church, if that's okay, Trustee Westlake, and then I'll go to you next.
Okay. Thank you. This past year, today's National Law Enforcement Recognition Day, I don't see the word "police officer," "police department." We have a 30 officer, 33 officer department. I don't see that in here, and that's one of the things they're gonna have to know that they're supervising. So I really would like to put something in there. And additionally, we have seen, when we did this last, last time, violence wasn't on our radar scope, and now we're seeing more violence and more public speaking on it. So I'd kinda like to see something in there about, and, and please help me, because I'm not good at this, but recognizing that they supervise a police force and recognizing dealing with violence in schools.
Sure, I mean, I'm more than happy to help, but Clerk Rodriguez?
Well, if I may, and I, I hear what you're saying, Trustee Church, and I would say, with all due respect, anyone that's looking to work here should know that. There should be research done by a candidate that wants to be CEO of our school district. And, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, anyone that's doing their homework would know that, that's something that they would be overseeing. My opinion.
Quick comment. It is kind of the exception to the rule. As we mentioned earlier today, a lot of them contract with the sheriff's department, and it's, it is unique here. I mean, it doesn't hurt.
Um, is there, is there one of the essential duties and responsibilities where you think that this fits? I mean, I think it could be a carry-on potentially in item 14, where it says "responsible for the overall management of emergencies and the safety of students, staff, and visitors" to include oversight or leadership of the school police department? Or, I'm just throwing it out there, because this was your idea, so I'm trying to find, like, when you reviewed this beforehand, is there an area that jumped out? No? Okay.
Not very good at that, and I'll, I'll admit that, so yeah, that looks great.
Okay, bear with me one sec while I write this one out.
I want to include D E O two. Everyone's overseeing that.
Can you say that while I, while I draft?
Well, and another part of that, a huge part of that will also be our school emergency management department or division.
Department.
Department Emergency Management. But again, I, I honestly, I stand by, I think that's, someone that's gonna come work here should know what they're getting themselves into.
Yeah, 'cause it says "responsible for the overall management of emergencies and the safety of students, staff, and visitors," which we could say to include the emergency management department, um, school, police.
Is that part of police?
Yes.
It's not its own department?
Under police.
Yeah.
So it's a department under police.
He reports to the chief.
So emergency management department falls under the school police department?
Yes.
So, I mean, we could potentially just simply add it as "responsible for the overall management of emergencies and the safety of students, staff, and visitors" to include the school police department, and just leave it at that.
Consider that a motion.
So I'll make that motion. So for item 14, I recommend the amendment to now, that line to be amended to now read "responsible for the overall management of emergencies and the safety of students, staff, and visitors" to include the school police department.
Second.
All right. Motion by President Smith, seconded by Trustee Church. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. All right. Any other edits or thoughts?
I have a, a question, Ashley. Thank you, President Smith. So under the Board Policy 9085, is that included in what we're talking about now, or is that just a complete separate article? Or is it connected directly to what we're, her, her duties? Because I had, I had some concerns with the 9085, but that might be a separate thing to do later. Okay. Never mind.
Gotta put the light on. Any other edits or thoughts? I mean, we, we really overhauled this a couple of years ago, so by no means are we looking for big material changes, but refinements are important. And we'll be doing this to signal to the public on all these things. Nothing we did before is gonna roll into the future. Who we're looking for, who we are now, where we're going, contracts, all of that will be publicly discussed, and we won't just be rolling anything forward. We will be carefully considering the needs of our district and our community now in the trajectory of where it is we wanna be. Trustee Westlake? Do you, you still have your line on before I go to Vice President-
Oh, shoot.
-Mayberry? All right. Vice President Mayberry?
I was just gonna make a motion, but I think we need public comment.
I spotted one little typo, maybe?
Should I go for it?
It's not, well, not, throughout our policy, we've gone back and revamped his and her for the purposes of equity, and so, do we want his and her, do we just want their for those that identify outside the box? And I used that term earlier, so, but I just spotted that.
Can you point us to where the his or the her is so that we know?
I see it under number eight.
I don't see, I mean, so we could, I mean, we could amend it to his, her, their behalf in both those positions?
And it's number 11 as well. I don't care, but I just wanna make sure we throw all of those in.
Well, I mean, you could make a motion to do that. It's not a bad idea by any means, but I just, if you have the idea, so, I mean, I did the other one, so, I mean, it's, it's not a bad idea by any stretch. I just, you know. What do you wanna do?
Sure. I'll make a motion to amend his and her in this to "there."
Or maybe his, her, his, his, her, there, so it would be all three.
That sounds good to me. You're the expert, you're the expert on this.
I am a little bit.
I just caught that on some other policies.
Well, I, you know, you brought it up, so I, I do think that the motion should be yours, and we do have a motion seconded by Trustee Woodley. So as a friendly amendment, would you be open to changing that motion to changing his, her, to his, her, there?
Actually, I think theirs covers everything. I think theirs just "there," T-H-E-I-R. I spelled it right.
Okay. That's fine. So just change his and her to there. You got it. All right, so motion by Trustee Church, seconded by Trustee Woodley. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on a roll. All right, I don't see any other lights on. Oh, Clerk Rodriguez, yeah?
Just one last question I kinda want to throw out to the board. And I don't know, maybe Chief Legal, this might be more in the contract type of thing, but residency, could that be something to be implemented to the?
You can add.
All right. Let me think for a second. Sorry.
Um-
So here's-
Do you need a minute?
No, I-
Okay, 'cause I can always talk.
Sure, go ahead.
So I, I mean, we'll, we'll see what Chief Legal Counsel Rombardo weighs in, but I can tell you that that's something that's on my mind too. An area where I was hoping to have a discussion on that would be in the outline of a contract. Because what this board will do is we'll create the outline of a contract that will not be final. That will not be until we enter into negotiations with an individual, and then we make refinements. However, when we have the outline of our lived experiences and what we're looking for, it does signal to applicants roughly what it is we're working with. And those would be decisions in the not-too-distant future, by the way, but I have been thinking about very similar topics myself.
Yeah, I, I, you know, this is a job description. I'm not really sure that that's a, a part of a job description, right? This is about what we expect from you. The contract, and through the hiring process, you can definitely add residency into it, and, and we've actually talked about that. So I think that, I agree with the President. That's probably the better place. I appreciate where you're coming from. I agree, but.
Madam President, thank you. For clarification, Trustee Rodriguez, you're referring to the individual actually living in the community. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, you're Washoe County's district CEO, she live in Washoe County.
Correct. Thank you.
Vice President Mayberry? You could make a motion if you want, while your light's on. Go for it.
Can I do that? Thank you. I will move that we approve the job description for the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District as, as amended. Thank you.
All right. So motion to approve the job description as amended by Vice President Mayberry, seconded by Trustee Nicolet, seeing no lights on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Shum, we really appreciate you. All right, that closes item 5.7 and closes Section 5 in its entirety, and brings us now into Section 6. Starting with item 6.01, our student representative had to go home, so we will certainly hear from her next time. And that brings us to item 6.02, our board- And that brings us to item 6.02, our board reports. And we will go ahead and we will start with Trustee Westlake today.
Thank you, President Smith. So the, the video first, if we could, at Reed. So pay particular attention to the electric violinist. That's him there. This is the Reed Band, Electric Band. And they perform with electric guitars through some of the performance and that electric violinist. I was actually blown away. I mean, blown away. That's good for that. Thank, thank you, poor JJ. She has to deal with my tech, tech inequities. Then I did participate in crafting at Sun Valley Elementary School in the kindergarten class of Ms. Rondowies. We made the cutest little tiles with our pictures on it and then looked like we were jumping rope with the string of lights. And then the, I got to help the kiddos put the little lights on the string. Priceless. I did another Mustang visit with teachers Chelsea and Kaylee, students Rachel and Lexi and their family. We all met at a McDonald's. It was a great time conversing and getting to know those two little girls. They're absolutely adorable. I had a visit at Innovations with Principal Mike Bradley, very impressed with his vision of what he sees for innovations and how to support those students. And then the last, my, my last pictures, I want to give a shout out. That's me in the background and my friend, it was Kathy Crook at the time. That's at Vaughn Middle School. We've been friends since the seventh grade. And she coincidentally is retiring from teaching after 25 years from Gerlach. That's where she ended up. Or, excuse me, 29 years of teaching and substituting, starting in woodshop science, technology, agriculture. She finished as a service as a success coach, and that's just to help kids get on track with what they see their future to be. And her, she's teacher, Kathy Torona now. That'd be the, the next picture. And that's her, I don't know, it's kind of itsy-bitsy. So she is second in from the left. And her sister, who I've known just as long, Vicki Espio, who lives out in Gerlach. She retired last year from Gerlach. And then, of course, we have Principal Stacy Black. I'm going to go drink their water there. They've got some really good things going on, but she's retiring this year. I'm just, I'm so proud of her. Her father and Vicki's father and the twins, Ron and Ray, was a teacher at Reed. He was a coach, track, ski coach, and Rusty Crook also served as a trustee on the school board. So Rusty, if you're listening, I got something from you other than just ski lessons, so thank you very much.
That's wonderful. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. So since our last meeting, I had different meetings at different locations, different individuals. I had a meeting with the Dr. Strominger. He's a constituent in our area and he's a pediatric surgeon for Renown. Unfortunately, he was dealing with a situation with his child playing a sports activity. And he had some issues with the NIAA for which I represent Washoe County on the board. So I had a meeting with him. It was very heartfelt. I have a lot of empathy for his son and their situation. And we have some concerns with the current regulations that we have as it relates to hardships and what is hardships and the lack of recognition with regards to mental health issues. So that's something that I've discussed with NIAA Executive Director, and we will be discussing it at the next meeting as well. But we do have to look at our current rules. Sometimes rules, regulations just become archaic at some point, and we, we, we need to look at it and update it and have that discussion. And unfortunately, we have some of us that don't like change, don't want to make change, but you got to get with the times, you know? And you have to acknowledge all possible circumstances and situations. So I feel for this family, and I know we've had others that have situations with hardships with regards to kid has to sit out for an entire year, school year, if they change schools from playing sports. Many of us know sometimes sports is the most important thing to a kid, you know? So to do something like that and not take into consideration their mental health or conditions, I think is is very sad. So that's something I'll be working on. We have a meeting coming up here soon. On a lighter note, on January 30th, I attended a Nevada basketball team game, and we kicked Fresno's butt. Ninety-something, a fifty-something, and I got floor seats. I don't know how I got so lucky, but I got floor seats. And it just so happens that that day, all of our high school cheerleaders performed at halftime. And it just so happened that I had the Lansters performing right in front of the seat where I was sitting. So I had McQueen High School right in front of me, so that was awesome. That was awesome to see all those young cheerleaders out there cheerleading, representing the Washoe County School District. It was beautiful. And then lastly, I did visit Clayton Middle School, Mr. Martindale. He's, he's so informative. He, he provided me a lot of education. I really appreciate that. And I also visited Elmcrest Elementary. Ms. Wilson, she has a big heart and so, so do her staff. And they have significant, every time I've been there, I've seen them deal with and help kids that have, that come from so many different backgrounds and situations at home. And each time I've been there, I've seen, and I'm just grateful that we have the assistance there for these schools, specifically with counselors and social workers. So I'm really glad that we have that there. And that's it. I think I'm running out of time. Thank you.
Trustee Church.
Thank you. Yeah, no, obviously, we were gone for the holidays, and it's a new year, so I'm wishing everybody, everybody a safe and healthy new year, prosperous new year for everybody. I kind of forget, you know, what I did three weeks ago or two weeks ago, but I did meet with the talent and equity department heads. Had a great discussion about recruiting, about hiring, about our, our diversity manual, which is called the Reflections Manual, which is dated 2020, so I think it needs to be updated. So that was great. I gave a talk to the Rotary up at Incline Village about educational issues. The Rotary, if you don't know about it, is just an incredible program where people give back to the community. My daughter did an exchange many years ago in Italy through the Rotary Club. And so I just can't say enough good things about it, but it was a great, a great talk and to meet my constituents up there at Incline Village. And then sometimes, I guess I'm type A, I guess I like to multitask, but sometimes when I'm watching TV, I pull up old newspaper archives. And this is Police Day, Law Enforcement Day, so it has nothing to do with the school district. But I happened to be playing around on the computer, just reading old newspapers, and I solved a cold case homicide. 1808. A deputy was stabbed to death back east. And there basically was nothing out here back in 1808, but he was stabbed to death. And then I checked the name on what's called the Memorial Wall or Officer Down Memorial Page. He wasn't there. And I'm all excited. For somebody like me, this is research, it's, oh my goodness. And maybe I got that spelling wrong, maybe I got the date wrong, but nope, Deputy Sheriff Robert Wynn was stabbed to death July 14th, 1808. So within days, we have him on the Officer Down Memorial Page wall. And hopefully, not this year, but hopefully it'll get approved and he will be on the National Wall the following year. So I just kind of, it's just a hobby, but since it's Law Enforcement Day and I've got a few minutes, I thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
I think, Madam President, I'll be honest, I took kind of a little bit of holidays off, enjoyed it with my family. And I, I, I know, how dare I? But I, I do want to thank my colleagues for a kind of spontaneous moment to run over some donuts and treats to our school police and especially our dispatchers. And I too wish everyone a Happy New Year, and it's going to be exciting. I can't wait to see all the work that we do this year.
Trustee Nicolet.
I attended the Worcester IB graduation ceremony. There were 18 graduates. And I just want to give a little international baccalaureate summary here. Basically, IB incorporates university-level critical thinking and skills. And, and also incorporates research and research methodology. So these kiddos, they, they really go the extra mile. It was fun. And I will say, President Smith, it was really cool that you couldn't do it because I got to speak to them. So thank you for that opportunity. Cue it up if you would. North Valley's High School Gym Dedication for Coach Richard Peraldo. He retired, and North Valley's High School dedicated their gymnasium to Richard, who is a coach and a teacher. And, and so, wow, can you imagine having a gymnasium named after you? Well, Richard can. His, his dream came true. Good job, Richard. Visited Duncan Elementary and heard a lot about how Washoe County is an ed partner for them. And they supply throughout the year, food, fun, volunteers, and resources. And I also have for each one of you, the principal, Ryan Smith at Glen Duncan Elementary. He has this fabulous contest where the kids draw, and he makes bookmarks out of them, so I have some really cool bookmarks for you. I visited Spanish Springs Elementary School with PBS and Teacher Joy in the Curiosity Classroom. And Nancy and Kurt from PBS joined me. I had the most wonderful experience at Trainer Middle School during passing time, which I love passing time. The hallways are needless to say, very exciting and interesting. And I saw the campus supervisor at Trainer Middle School. Oh my goodness, this gentleman was absolutely phenomenal. There was a student that was having some struggles in between passing. He got on the phone with the student's mother, and they talked for a few minutes. And then the student talked to the mom on the campus supervisor's phone, and it was just like this miracle working, this relationship building that was just so beautiful. And then I visited Reno High School, Hunter Lake Elementary School, Marcy Hers, and AACT. And I want to tell you, there's a theme throughout that I'm going to share with you right now that I think is really important. We kind of alluded to it when we talked about the job description for the superintendent. I love this term. We want an owner, not a renter. And that was a theme throughout, so bada bing, I had a ball. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Madam President, and Happy New Year. And yeah, I took a little time off too, but leading up to the week of Christmas, I had an opportunity to go to Sparks High School for Chili Cook Office, some of you there, I believe. Also attended the Peraldo Gym Ceremony with then-Vice President Nicolet. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to attend the baccalaureate graduation. Thank you. At Worcester, I had a great time at the Hidden Valley Elementary School where I attended the deaf and hard-of-hearing students' Christmas party. It's always heartwarming, and also enjoyed the Holiday Orchestra at Dilworth Middle School. And completed the year at Diedrickson Elementary where I met with Principal Ryan Dootch, who's reduced behavior issues by double digits at his school, and he gave me an overview of that. And it was great to see the 2023 Teacher of the Year, Connie Hall. I want to thank Dr. McNeil for answering the call of duty and coming back. It's good to see you. And I want to thank Dr. Nicolet for your service as Vice President. I have big shoes to fill, and we appreciate your leadership on the, on the board leadership team. Congratulations to Clerk Rodriguez and Principal Smith. What's, what's that? What'd I miss? Did I say principal? I've done it a couple of times. Well, she is, okay, thank you. Thank you for calling me out on that. And also, I, yeah, that's, that's really it. I wanted to, to acknowledge, I, you know, I know there was, we talked a little bit about an item earlier. And, and I do think from my perspective, and I know my colleagues share this, that, you know, our psychologists are really important to this district. You know, we talk a lot about mental health, and I do appreciate their service and grateful that we have their skills and their, their talent here. So I wanted to ensure that was on the record as well. It's something I wanted to say during that particular item, I didn't get a chance to. Thank you.
Thank you all. I would also like to start by thanking Trustee Nicolet for her services as Vice President for two years and for all the knowledge she has imparted to me and continues to and will definitely continue to. And then also thank you to interim Superintendent McNeil for all that she has done and all the work that's been done by many staff members as part of this transition. So I usually don't pull the curtain back this much, but I do think it's important for people to understand what goes into these roles. And I am going to share that I have worked every business day and most of the weekends since the last time we met on a variety of different things, but the community should know that in this role, that the work continues. So I have heavily been involved with the upcoming superintendent recruitment process, all of which will be brought to this board for public discussion and deliberation, including planning for the special meetings, the budget, prep for the upcoming interim finance committee meeting on February 8th, which is where the Washoe County School District will present and may possibly be granted a portion of the SB 231 matching funds. Been overseeing the transition of district business, which Dr. McNeil has been doing a fantastic job with, and then many other various meetings. I would like to bring attention to a couple of things. I'm going to start with a huge congratulations to AACT Senior Avery Serink for being the only high schooler in the nation to compete in the World Skills Welding Finals. And, and that's not for students, that's adults. So he's the only high schooler, he's 18 years old, and so he competed with all the adults. And now he's aiming to be chosen to represent Team USA in the Worlds Final, which will be in France this summer. So I say, go Avery and go CTE, because this is amazing. I also want to bring attention to a fantastic program. All right, all of our journalism partners out there, please ask for more information about the Galena High School Outdoor Academy. This program is debuting in the next school year, and this is everything we have been talking about. It's project-based learning that is hands-on and substantially outdoors. Students enrolling in this program will have the ability to earn Red Cross First Aid Lifeguarding, Wilderness First Responder, Hunter Safety, even an FAA Commercial Pilot License, and a lot more. And this is part of a traditional education here at WCSD. Right now, they're taking interest for this program. I highly recommend that all of our community members learn more. And I would very much like our journalism partners to ask about this so that we can promote this out. Because this is the kind of experiential learning that we know students are craving and that we are beginning to provide. We have been through our signature academies in CTE, but this is truly unique even in regards to that. So congratulations to the team for making that happen. Thank you. I just can't not use all the three minutes, can I? I know. All right, so that closes item 6.02, and now we'll move on to the interim superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So it's been a while since I've had to do one of these, so here we go. Just trying to get up to speed. It's not even a fire hose, it's really the fire hydrant that we've been drinking. So I do want to do a huge thank you to all of the trustees. We've started our one-to-one meetings. I was able to get those accomplished. And then also a huge shout out to our executive leadership team and our leadership team who have really been there and helped and support and just really done the welcome wagon. And then also just starting to meet with our associations on a monthly basis. One thing that I did is the permanent superintendent that I'd like to get back to is we did a quarterly meeting where I would bring all of our association leadership together. And that really helps us kind of focus on what is our mission as we move forward, so I'm looking forward to starting those again. And then meeting with. And then meeting with some community groups. We've got the Reno-Tahoe International Art Festival that's coming up. I'm meeting with the Gwen Center this week, so really just kind of getting back out there and making sure that our community is taken care of as well, an aspect to our schools. And then really looking forward to the 4:30 a.m. weather calls that are going to start tomorrow. I have missed those, Mr. Circe, beyond belief, so thank you for sending that team's message. And then finally, you all have been receiving emails all day on January as National School Boards Recognition Month, and so I asked our fabulous communication team to put some talking points together for me. Obviously, we can't thank you all enough for all of the support that you give, all of your time and huge talents. We deeply appreciate your commitment to our students. But over the course of this year, our trustees have done some amazing work. They've approved the budget for the fiscal year 2324 with significant investments in school safety and academic support for our students. We worked, they worked together to provide the WCSD Capital Improvement Program, to provide for projects throughout the district. You finalized the reduction in walk zones and approved adding a campus supervision position at each of your 17 middle schools. You approved your district's three-year strategic plan. You celebrated the opening of Jaywood Raw Elementary School and the district, the district's newest elementary school. You held a swearing-in ceremony, which was super cool, for the district's newest K-9 officer, firearms detection K-9 officer. And then lastly, but certainly not least, the board approved several bargaining unit agreements to provide well-deserved pay increases for many of our staff members. So on behalf of all of us, your 8,000 employees, we have a beautiful, not homemade from me, cookie that says "A Warm and Delicious Welcome." And I accidentally took it out of your budget, but I will reverse those terms.
Right, nothing like a gift you paid for yourself. Thank you so much. That's so incredibly kind. Thank you so much, Dr. McNeil. All right, that closes Section 6 and moves on to Section 7. I think this is a record for sections, starting with item 7.01, Public Comment. JJ.
Kalen Evans.
Welcome, President Evans.
I miss you guys. Happy New Year. Hi, for the record, my name's Kalen Evans, President of the Washoe Education Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to start taking the opportunities with these meetings to be on the record on some areas that we feel are extremely important to continue to focus, and, you know, they, they fall along with our district's strategic plan anyways, and it was actually right in tune, Trustee Westlake and Woodley, with your guys' board reports. The expansion of extracurricular and intercurricular and athletic opportunities for our students is something that the union has been strongly in support of for many years, and we've done extensive work over the last couple of years, reexamining the pay metrics and structures so that we can start to expand those opportunities across the school district. When we think about the importance of that goal number two, right, of our strategic plan around providing all those opportunities, the current structure that we have right now will not get us to be able to fulfill that goal. We're extremely excited in the springtime to be able to open up negotiations again around Appendix B. And so what Appendix B again is that pay structure for our coaches, our extracurriculars, that's band, orchestra, debate, yearbook, et cetera. We also have areas within Appendix B called Slot Pay. And what Slot Pay is, is it's discretionary funds that schools can choose how to use to provide more extracurricular activities for specific schools. So this could be a STEM club, this could be a garden club, this could be a group of teachers putting on a multicultural night, or, you know, a fall festival, and so, sort of, those sorts of things. So along with those discussions is around expanding those opportunities to the elementary level. And the reason I'm bringing this up today is because I know that there have been in our current ongoing discussions around the budget, and hoping and really trying to emphasize the importance of us systematically addressing this specific appendix, because if we cannot get students engaged at school, none of the intended programs or policies or pieces that we are trying to implement are going to have their intended impact. Student engagement is something that we talk a lot about at these board meetings. Student engagement addresses our truancies, it addresses a clear connection between academic performance and students who participate in extracurriculars and athletics, so that's very clear. And then ultimately, going back to, you know, we talk about the, the rise in student behaviors and how we start to address those pieces. So I want to just, again, using these oper, these meetings to be on the record on areas of focus to keep us moving forward, because, and, and what I really appreciate, Dr. McNeil, around, you know, we are not in a holding pattern, that we have a ton of work to do, that we need to keep pushing things forward, and we have a lot of work still to do within this school year to get us closer and closer to our ultimate goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, that closes item 7.01 for Public Comment, and brings us to item 7.02, our next meeting announcement, which is January 23rd, 2024, and item 7.03, adjoining the meeting at 6:30 6 p.m. Thank you.